Call and meeting order of council work session. Roll call.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Gremmle.
Here.
Councilmember Nesser.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, the first agenda item is a presentation discussion of updates to City Code, Chapter 4-1, Parks and Recreation Fees and Policies. Liz?
Where is it, Liz? I can't...
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wilson, members of the City Council. Liz Lingebok, Parks and Recreation. Let me pull this up real quick. Okay. So tonight, we're just kind of here to give a little background on our fees and talk a little bit about how our fee study typically works. Periodically, we review them about every five years or so. And, you know, review them for comparison to the market. Our own community needs might have changed, as well as changes in the law. And so about every five years, we go through this process. This item is already on the City Council work plan, and we wanted to take tonight to go over the current fees and policies to get your questions, any general feedback you might have. And then we'll take this feedback and we'll utilize it in our discussion with our Parks and Rec Commission in the upcoming months as they review all of this. Jamie Sullivan, our Recreation Superintendent, and Riley King, our Management Analyst, are behind me. They'll be doing all the presentations moving forward to our commission, as well as back to you from that. And so they're here to kind of take notes and listen in and hear what you guys have to contribute to this. Historically, we are able to offer our programs, services, and parks through funding out of the General Fund. And then that is also offset somewhat through user fees. So those are kind of our two main resources for being able to offer everything that we do. Additionally, we go out for grants, and we do have some corporate partnerships that help with that as well. The, our community events, our general park usage, so that passive use of folks just showing up at the park, picnicking, you know, hitting the ball around, that kind of stuff. Many of our services and all of those types of things are free to the community. And then we offer other programs for a small reasonable fee that again is kind of based on this market study that we do. And those help to offset the General Fund. We additionally offer a really robust scholarship program to youth that are 17 and younger. So anybody who can't afford our fees, we are very fortunate to have amazing partners in the community like Lost Dutchman Marathon, Superstition Mountain Promotional Corporation, and many others that contribute over $25,000 a year towards our scholarship fund that makes it so that kids can either get 50% off fees or complete scholarship on fees based on their financial need and living in our general area. We have already begun the fee research with our market cities. The market cities that we use are the ones that the City Council had approved and decided on several, many years ago. And so we use that for all of our data, that those are our main comparator cities. You'll learn more about that as we come back and share more information with you. A couple of the things that we know we are going to want to address, the number one being commercial use of our facilities. So in the past, businesses or other for-profit entities have not been able to use, to be able to rent our facilities. It's always only been used for nonprofit and non-commercial usage. Businesses could partner with a nonprofit agency, like the Chamber of Commerce or somebody else, and have an activity out there. But, you know, over time, that was just a philosophy from long ago, and that was pretty common in a lot of municipalities. But over the last 10 years, a lot of cities have made it possible so that they can rent facilities. Oftentimes, though, at a higher fee, and at a fee that is a little bit more reasonable for a profit-making business versus a nonprofit business. So we'll be exploring that and looking into that throughout this next, throughout the study. And then in addition tonight, as we kind of go through, we're not going to go through every individual fee, but just some of the main categories. If there are other things that the council would like us to make sure that we are looking into and researching at this time, then we'll just be taking notes and make sure that that comes back to you in our recommendations. So with that, that's kind of segue into this. So we'll just kind of look here on the screen. I have our fee schedule. The whole first section is just our facility and equipment rental fees. So all of our meeting and classroom spaces, five, six, really about six years ago now, these were what, we compared ourselves to the nonprofit rate and the resident rate of every city that we were comparing to, and we try to be in the middle there in what we feel is reasonable for our community. So these are some of the rates for the meeting spaces, our sports fields. We do have a daytime fee and an evening fee for if, for whenever they're having night usage and just accounting for all of our lights. The group use of our Ramadas, we kind of want to explain this one just a little bit because we do get asked questions often. We do require groups that are over 24, so 25 and more people in a group do have to reserve the park if they're going to be utilizing it. The main idea over the many years that we've done that is that passive free use of the park is really for our families to be able to come out and just get out there first come, first served. Small gathering, small family things. But once people start really monopolizing an area of the park so that other families and other people can't use it, then at that point, we feel that the extra fees would kick in. And again, they're very, generally really reasonable once people look at it. And so that's, once there's 25 and more, then folks would be talked to by a park ranger and shared that, you know, next time you need to have a reservation, or if it's really big, or if they're doing things they shouldn't, they'd obviously help them to kind of either move on their way. That rarely happens. Our rodeo park, we do have some very reasonable fees so that even if somebody wants to come out and exercise their horse or go out with their family, they could do that for $8 in the arena per hour, which is a fairly reasonable type of activity or use in there. Our pool entry passes, so we, this covers what it is for our daily pass into the aquatic facility, and then our season passes. To rent our swimming pool, we do rent the pool on weekends during the summer months when we have our lifeguards employed and when we have enough staff to be able to offer that. And it's broken out into several categories. I know we want to look at this a little bit this next year. This is not even covering our lifeguards right now. So just over time, because of the minimum wage increase, we'll definitely be looking at that and comparing with other cities. Our MGC fees for the membership passes, as well as our daily passes, is all covered in this section so that you can kind of review and see where those are at. And then we get into sports courts, the Veterans Memorial Park, which is the gazebo out there on the corner of Superstition in Idaho. And then we have fees for all of our special services and equipment that we'll be kind of taking a look at. So if folks are going to want to rent the stage, that's one that individuals do ask about occasionally. We rent out bleachers to Superstition, the museum at times, whenever they're having their big events. So I know, yes.
I just had a question. So the mobile stage. All right, so I see that you have, so if someone were to rent the stage, the city would have staff to...
Yes, correct.
So...
Nobody would be allowed to use a stage without an operator.
So it would be $750 if you're going to rent the stage?
Correct.
You just have it broken up?
We will definitely be looking at that one. So we haven't had, amazingly enough, we haven't had a ton of people reserving the stage for $750. And we, again, we kind of did all of the cities that were doing stages, we used that as our comparator. But in the beginning, it was very new, and so we didn't want people to just, you know, it needs to be a hefty price because we will only have it once. And it's a very, you know, almost $150,000 piece of equipment, and so we have to be very cautious. But I do think, though, that we've had it long enough, we know better about it now. That is definitely one that's worth looking at a little bit. Would more nonprofits or other groups be able to use it and have staff there for it if it were a little bit more reasonable, reasonably priced? So with that, just before we move into, so the next part is policies. So I don't know if you have some other fee questions in general that you'd like to ask. I'm happy to answer those, and then we'll move on to policies.
I have one more, Liz.
Okay.
Really, I've been known to do this. So under the sports fields, so like Prospector Park, I'm assuming, right? So if Sunday morning rolls around, you get a bunch of guys together, want to go play some softball, we'd have to rent this thing out?
Only if you have 25 or more people. And I guess you could, but most of our groups don't.
Right, but if it was on the weekend, where would you go to rent it out?
You...
You'd have to pre-plan that, I'm assuming?
Well, to some degree. The Multi-Gym Center is open on Saturday, and so everybody at our center can answer facility reservation questions. So we do have somebody 5:30 in the morning till 9 o'clock at night, Monday through Friday. And then on Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., that could help somebody. What we would encourage is that, you know, if it's you and your buddies and you just want to go out and play, you have less than 25 people, whatever field is available, you can just go out and use it. You don't have to rent it, you don't have to ask for it, as long as nobody else is on it, and we have reservation tags on everything, so people would know if they were. You could use it just first come, first served. If somebody wanted to reserve it, then yes, they would have to do some additional stuff. There might be some before the day of types of activities. But like I said, we have a lot of people on the, you know, that are able to answer those questions pretty much every day, except for Sunday. And we don't, we do also answer email, even on Sunday, even in the evening, to kind of give people an idea of what it is that they want to do. We are looking towards online reservation for that in particular, ball fields. We are looking at migrating from our current software system into something new and more updated that would make that a little bit easier for us to do, but that's definitely something that we're looking at and definitely would be beneficial, I think.
Would if, oh, I'm sorry, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I didn't mean, it was, I had a question going off of Robert. If you do the online reservation for that, will people be able to see the schedule that's set for those fields?
Yeah. So actually, we're looking at right now, our current system would probably make it possible so that way we can show the availability at least online, so that people could just see what is already reserved, and they'd know where there's at least a free space. That's something that we're working on, that we think we could get happening pretty soon. Actually reserving it online would just be kind of that next step, but very doable.
Right.
Yeah. So I know, obviously, there's a reason that we have priority use, but has there been any thought or anything in regards to opening up parks for out-of-city businesses and residents to reserve something maybe at a slightly higher cost, or?
So right now, anybody could reserve our facilities. We don't, it's not just open to residents.
Okay.
I will kind of talk a little bit more about the policy stuff, and I'll try to explain that a little bit better. It's always a little, can be, can be a little bit confusing at times. But right now, we do not have a resident or a non-resident fee. But that is something that is in our research, to kind of look at that as an option, to be able to bring in a little bit more money. One of the things that we found in the past, the main reason why the Commission and our council over the years chose not to go that route was because, because we are smaller, and because here in the community, many programs wouldn't go if it weren't for residents outside of the city of AJ. So Gold Canyon residents, County Island residents participating. And so we've really tried hard to, it helps our residents to have non-residents be able to participate. And so instead, we've opted to have resident priority reservations. And so, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. But that way, at least our residents get the first pick of it all, and they get something for being a resident. And then the non-residents supplement that with whatever is left and is available. But we will have resident and non-resident rates to share with, that our other market cities are doing.
Okay. And then in terms of the rodeo grounds, we still, even under like the arena preparation and all of those different uses, that still is required to be nonprofit, correct?
Correct. And then that's the other reason why we don't have, we, we never really worked very hard towards commercial fees because most of our property was on BLM land, and we couldn't do for-profit things anyways. But now that we have Flatiron, Superstition Shadows is something that people could rent, that, there's no stipulation there. We're looking at purchasing our rodeo grounds hopefully one day, and so we'll want to have these in place, so that way we'll be able to do that.
So then the only two places that would be nonprofit only would be Prospector Park and Rodeo Grounds, because they're on BLM.
For now, yep. And Silly Mountain, but we don't really reserve, we do have reservations out at Silly Mountain for some events, but they're usually things we're partnering or a city department is partnering with.
Okay.
So Silly Mountain would be another one.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, and the Multi-Gym Center would be the same.
Absolutely. Yeah, so you, we could have commercial use, and that's definitely a highly desirable facility for commercial use and for businesses.
And the, my biggest question was, were we ready to add the for-profits into this at a different rate?
Yes.
Why not make the money?
Right. And I think a lot of, a lot of, I know our Commission, when we talked about that last year, they're very interested in that. You know, there is still, there is a lot of philosophy back that it's, all these facilities are paid with tax dollars and that they, you know, that you shouldn't be making profit with tax dollars. But all the cities have kind of worked around that a little bit. And again, it's making it available to the community, and our business is part of our community. I think all of us, we're very open to the idea. We just need to make it happen now and figure out how we want to make that work out, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I have a curiosity question, Liz, that I don't remember after, from all the years I was on Parks and Rec. Under the rodeo park, since it is BLM land, how do we charge an hourly fee to someone who wants to use it? I can't remember.
So as long as they are a nonprofit or a private individual, like a resident or a non-resident, just a private person, we can charge fees as long as whatever fees we charge are not, are fair and minimal, and that we use the money, that that money goes back into the, into the facility. So we're allowed to charge as long as all of that goes back into the operation of the facility. We spend more, definitely more money on the rodeo grounds than we do bring in fees, and so we meet that criteria.
The other thing on the Multi-Gym Center, the daily fees?
Mm-hmm.
$3 if you're under 17 and $5. Is that for the gym equipment upstairs? Is that what you're, this is saying?
So it's basically for general entry for any of the amenities that are there. So the climbing wall, the game room, the gymnasium, the fitness area, any of those things with that fee could be utilized on that day. All of our fitness classes, so if they wanted to come and be in any of our group fitness classes, that daily fee is what individuals would pay if they don't want to buy a membership.
All right.
Mayor, I just have a quick question. So Liz, can you kind of tell us what fee would you say most people have issue with that we currently have? Do you know off the top of your head?
I would not say, and Jamie can tell me if I'm wrong, or come up and let me know if I'm wrong, but there aren't any fees that anybody has issues with. So we don't get a lot of, in fact, almost all the time, even for facility rental fees, when people want us to comp their fees and we tell them, you know, we really can't do that, here's what it costs, they're always blown away that, oh, gosh, it's only that amount of money. So I don't feel like that's the reason or that's a problem. But we do like to check in every five or six years and make sure that we're still on the mark. And I would say, a little bit more on the other end of it, that sometimes, especially with the minimum wage increase, it's increased substantially, we need to make sure that we're at least be able to recover a little bit more of our costs. The vast majority of our services and facilities are funded by the General Fund. But user fees do help offset that, and we do try to share with people that that is really important to pay to kind of help us. So, okay. So quickly, I'm just going to move into the, I'm sorry, unless there's other questions on the fees themselves. Okay. Just a few of the policy items. We, last time, we just put in there that we could require a deposit if it was something that we felt needed a deposit, or there was an activity going on that we wanted to make sure that if there was any damage or anything like that, we could do. But we don't currently do a deposit for anything other than the mobile stage, and that's really part of their fee as well.
Have we experienced challenges with that? I mean, do we get things broken or not returned?
Not very often. You know, the occasional times that we do, usually we can, we'll talk with the group, and either they're never going to come back again, or if there's somebody that really wants to use it often, you know, they will make sure that they do a good job. Our park attendants and our park rangers are pretty visible, and they generally can kind of get a handle. I don't know of anything ever being something that really caused us a lot of problems. You know, maybe left it a little dirty once or so. I apologize. There are program and activity fees that are next, that just to kind of give you an understanding of as you look through this, we've always done ranges because there's no way to say the exact cost of every program. It depends on how long it lasts, who is teaching it, what are the materials and the supplies that we're going to provide. Our adult sports leagues can be anywhere from 50 to 500 dollars. So anywhere from a two-person pickleball or tennis team up to, for a league, up to, or an individual, I should say, up to a softball team is generally our largest fees. So you can kind of look here what our ranges are. Our swim instruction, so our swimming lessons themselves are $25. They're $20 if you register early enough. They're only $25 if you come the day of or the weekend before and want to register. And, but if you want, we do have some kind of semi-private lessons, some adult lessons that can run a little bit higher than that. You can kind of look through these. It just, some of these are a fee so low for a one-day drop-in type of thing, but Open Gym could also sign up for a whole summer, and we have to have that ability in our code to be able to charge up to $300 for a certain thing. And so then we would just set that price based on what the program is.
And Liz, what is Open Gym?
Open Gym is our after-school, I'm sorry, our out-of-school time campsite, technically. So all of our activities at either one of the school sites or at the Multi-Gym Center that families can bring their kids, and we'll plan a bunch of different activities for them. We've worked really closely with Boys and Girls Club over this last year, you know, more and more. We try not to duplicate what a lot of other folks are doing. And so our Open Gym has really morphed a lot in this last year. If, if Boys and Girls Club is offering it, or if we can find a place that is offering it inexpensively, then we try to work with them to have them offer, and we offer the smaller classes. But that's basically what Open Gym is, is more a camp setting.
How many schools do we do that in?
So we used to be in almost everyone, but there isn't, the need is just not as prevalent. So we have scaled back quite a bit. We're usually at Cactus Canyon and at the Multi-Gym Center. We usually try to have two sites, depending on what we're offering and what the need is.
Thank you.
Special events, I just wanted to mention really quick. Most of our special events are free, but we have a few that have a small fee. Our Mud Run has a fee because I get a shirt and some other things. We are looking at this fee just because we also have booth fees and some other things that happen that a business or a nonprofit could have in an event, so we'll be looking at that a little bit and sharing that later on. Our youth sports leagues are very inexpensive. You know, again, we really, we try to look at the market, but we also look at what our community can afford or what the average person can afford. Whatever our fees are, for those that really can't afford more, our scholarship does kick in and does help a lot with that. Refunds, so we just made sure that our refund policy is in there. That's been our refund policy for quite a while. It's very consistent with other cities. Promotional discounts, so we did put this in last time, that in order for us to kind of give discounts on different things, so we do promotional offers, so for Veterans Weekend, Week, we'll do a Veterans Discount, or Teacher Appreciation Week, there might be a, anybody who's an educator in the community could get a discount. And so promotional discounts allows us to have that flexibility within the department. And we did limit it, though, that it could only be up to 50% off the regular price. They generally, it's generally in that 20%, 10, 15% that our promotional discounts are. But it gives us that flexibility to be able to do that. And then this is the part that can get a little bit confusing. So our priority, it's called priority use because that's what it's been called forever, but it really kind of talks about what, kind of, how are we prioritizing how people can utilize the facilities? So the first group of users is the no-fee category. And so really, this is for us, first and foremost, for our own programs, our own activities, the sponsored things that we do as a city and as a Parks and Rec Department. In that category, if we don't have it already reserved for something, then it's all other city departments are available to use it. City Council approves special events, which we consider annually during the budget process. We have the ones that we, you guys are very familiar with, Lost Dutchman Marathon, Lost Dutchman Days Parade, Lost Dutchman Days Rodeo, Festival of the Superstitions, a few, Veterans Day Parade, a handful of other things that are already approved, and so those are in this no-fee category. If folks want to have or want to propose a new one, it really is a process. We don't just let anybody be in that group. We need to recover our costs. So we really try to keep it to those top five. And then if an agency can go out and prove that it's something that could bring value to the city, maybe it's going to give back a certain amount of money to youth or to our programs or to our facility. Those would be things that we might bring back and say, yeah, you know, yeah, this is something we should look at. But anything that is using police resources, public works resource, we don't have any extra of that. And so people need to just pay for those outright, like they do in a lot of other areas. And that's what we would, we would encourage them to do. Also, in the no-fee category, our partner agencies with formal agreements. So for example, Apache Junction Unified School District, they have an IGA that you, that the City Council approved, where we trade facilities for free. And then, so that's the no-fee category. We get into the partial fee category. And so we created this, I think, last time. We've always kind of had a, we tried to work with our nonprofit groups that served youth, youth in particular. And so we formalized it the last time, so that way we had a policy, and we'd have something that we could really go back to and say, this is, these are the groups that qualify. And so this is one that, you know, would love your feedback and thinking if this is still where we're at. So we have a partial fee category if they meet all of these criteria. They're a youth-serving agency that's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. They're governed by a local unpaid volunteer board and unpaid staff. Participant members are made up of a majority of city AJ residents. So for example, a club baseball or a club soccer team, they would show their roster and show that more than 50% of them reside in Apache Junction. And then the fourth criteria is that it's open to the public and not by invitation only. So there might be club teams out there that do tryouts and don't let everybody participate. So that wouldn't qualify. They would have to pay, they could still use the facility, they would just have to pay the fees. They can't limit it by any other means than the natural, you know, an age group, or it's a certain, you know, I don't know what else it could be. But those are the criteria to receive basically 75% off the fee. They are only paying 25% of the already nonprofit and resident rate that we have in our fees. And so it's very, very reasonable for like our Apache Junction Little League, the 4H, the, all of those different groups. And then finally is the full fee category. So when it's not, when facilities are not being used by us or any of the groups listed above, then they're made available to private individuals as well as other nonprofits that can rent the facility for the costs. Any questions on that part?
Liz, can I say something?
Yes.
So on this one, I just want to say thank you for letting us have the kickball tournament, A number one for the city. We got priority use, Matt.
That's right.
And get that going. And we're also getting ready for Scrub and Grub, so that's coming up here a little bit later. With regard to events, we get hit up way more, and you may get hit up a lot. And what I've tried to encourage at the Chamber of Commerce and the, our new executive over there is the events that we have, I just want to reemphasize what Liz said about our ability and our resources. We're, we're at where we are because the status quo is sometimes not the greatest, but sometimes in this case, in terms of those five events from fourth as well, you went through them all. I want to do those the best we can. And sometimes we will want to do, so one time we had a parade that wanted to do this, or when we get on spray mode, and we just got to stay targeted. And if we think through that, I think we can do other things. So like, we were just getting, before COVID, we had the Blues and Brews event, it was on a second time. It was getting very popular. And there's some other things that have some great potential in Apache Junction. And I just want to reiterate that if we start going down the path as we work with private, and Liz will get more into that, that we do need to really recognize that one-to-one relationship and look for your support in helping us. Because we can do some great things, we just need to make sure the cost recovery is there. There just isn't that ability to do that. And we do feel that pressure sometimes, well, come on, you're the city, right? And Liz does such a great job out there.
It's a good cause.
It's a good cause.
Every, we have a lot of great causes in our community, so.
Everything.
And like I said, most everybody's very understanding, anytime we've ever shared with them why we have to charge the fees that we do, and they do appreciate that they're pretty low. So any questions on that? The very last item in our policies on here are priority reservations and registrations. I kind of already shared that, that this was sort of our answer at the time to non-resident resident fees. We are very open, though, to exploring those, and if those are... We are very open, though, to exploring those, and if those are things that you guys wish us to look at further and consider, we can certainly take that to our Parks and Rec Commission. But this basically makes it, so swimming lessons is one that we have about a week, if not two weeks, depending of resident-only registration. It only goes out to residents in our database, and it's announced out here, and it doesn't even turn on to anybody who has a different address. Easter is typically, and COVID is a little different, but typically Easter and Mother's Day Weekend were resident, we didn't do any, take any reservations for it except for from residents. Only residents could reserve it until the two weeks, the one week prior to the events happening, or to those weekends happening. And basically, whatever was left was available to other folks. So.
Do we know what those events look like this year?
We do. So Easter is going to be, similar to last year, we're beefing it up a little bit, but Easter will for sure, we're still in a situation of we probably can't have our thousands of people all together again. But the weekend, if people want to reserve the Ramadas and things like that, they'll still be able to, and parks are open, and we have a lot of really fun things planned for Easter, so.
Yeah, wasn't bringing like 5,000 people or something, that was huge.
Yeah. It's a very big event.
I'm getting some questions. Is the pool open, opening this summer?
We are planning, we're moving forward as if we're opening for everything that we can. So last summer, we were able to do swimming lessons and water aerobics, and so we were open at the pool for just limited, unlimited attendance. We will be limited again this summer, is what I would imagine, but we are hiring as if we're hiring for the full summer because lifeguards and WSIs are very scarce right now. We will be open for whatever capacity we're allowed, paired with however many, however much staff we have. So basically, the more people that we can get, the more we'll be able to do our swimming lessons. We are looking at doing open swim in a limited, so that just coming and swimming in a limited capacity. We've all learned a whole lot over this last year of the things that we can do, and so our team is definitely preparing for that.
Are we social distancing, masking, or do, I'm assuming there's social distancing?
There'll be some of that, some different things like that. I'm probably getting off on, right? Okay, is a work session okay to?
Yes, great night to talk about, I think everybody's wondering.
Okay. So the pool fees will be in place because we will be planning to have the pool opening this summer.
I don't recommend wearing a mask in a pool, though.
Yeah, I'm just, there are some very specific things that the CDC as well as our aquatics, we have a Model Health Aquatic Code that is governed by aquatic facility owners and all of our, you know, American, all of those different entities. They have worked very tirelessly on the things that are safe and not safe to do, and they have very reasonable things that many of our cities have done, so we'll be.
The questions for the public, it wasn't my question personally.
No, right.
It was so that people, when they're wondering how the, these classes go, or what are we doing, what are the requirements, that was.
And please, refer them to our Facebook page because we are announcing about our lifeguards and our WSIs right now, and we really need staff, so.
So we're really looking for some staff, believe it or not.
For the fees, to be.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the policy stuff that we've talked about today, or things that you would like us to make sure that we look at and consider?
I don't see any others. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Okay, presentation and discussion, impacts of long-range transportation planning with federally patented easements. Who's going to take that one? Emile?
Emile.
Oh, a volunteer.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson, members of the council. Emile Schmidt, city engineer in the Public Works Department. This is a re-presentation, repeat presentation from, from a while ago, last year in June. Both Larry Kirch, Development Services Director, and I were here, and we went through a presentation about federal patent easements and what is our vision, what are we wanting to accomplish? Some things that I'd like to accomplish with the presentation this evening, and if it's familiar to a few of you, I apologize, but for some of you that are new to the council, I know some of you are painfully aware of federal patent easements, issues involved with that, either with yourselves or with neighbors or just hearing of issues throughout the city. I'd like to give a brief history, a 101, if you will, of federal patent easements. Also talk about the many FPE extinguishments that we've had in the past without any kind of direction or vision or framework in doing those. I'd like to talk a little bit about, over the last five years, what staff has been doing in coming or moving towards a traffic circulation plan. Also like to talk a little bit about, you know, the long view. What is our vision, what is our perspective, or what are we hoping to do to create a vision? And then to close, I'd like to talk a little bit about the need for a formal policy on city extinguishments. So let's just jump right in. Federal patent easements, misunderstood by practically many people. So back in 1938, we had a Small Tracks Land Act, which created the mechanism to create and sell federal lands. With the federal lands that were sold in numerous sizes here in our area, they are typically bounded on all four sides of a single parcel with a 33-foot perimeter that's reserved for transportation and utility easements. And in this area, a lot of these patent easements were created in the 50s, mid 50s, so a good while ago. And when AJ became incorporated, then we obtained or inherited these easements. And the standard wording in these documents that created the federal patent easements, it says, "is subject to a right-of-way not exceeding 33 feet in width for roadway and public utility purposes." Now, it's important to understand that the underlying land is still owned by the private citizen. We don't own the land, the utility companies don't own the land, it is an easement. And here in this area, we have six utility companies, SRP, Southwest Gas, AJ Water District, Sewer District, Arizona Water, Central Link, and MediaCon, that have the rights to use these FPE corridors to expand their services or networks to reach different parts of the community. Now, when, we as a city, when we give up our rights to use a federal patent easement, we only speak to the road use of it. We can't speak for the utility companies when we extinguish easements. And the utility companies, because we're initiating a road extinguishment, they don't have to, and most don't, or most do not extinguish their, your rights to use it for utilities when we extinguish our road easement. It is a separate process that landowners, parcel owners can engage with each of the utility companies to, if not eliminate, maybe reduce their easement requirements. And a small number, a small handful of citizens have been successful over the years in actually following through with utility companies to do that. Long paragraph here, it's kind of legal, but basically what happens is when the city extinguishes a federal patent easement, the roadway portion of it, we basically surrender our rights forever. As an example, let's say if we have a federal patent easement, it becomes a right-of-way through some kind of a development or something, and then years down the road, for whatever reason, the city decides to vacate that segment of right-of-way. When that right-of-way goes away, the old federal patent easement doesn't, you know, magically reappear and come back, that's no longer in play at all, except for the utility part. Another large misconception that we run across is what FPEs can be used for, besides the city building roads through them, or besides utility companies using them for their, for their lines. A lot of people think that, well, there's an FPE across this land, I can access it, I can go across this FPE at will. That is not the case. It is private property. It is, it is not a public easement, it is, it is a city easement, it is a utility easement. And until we as a city or the utility companies desire to use that, it's still private land with, that's encumbered with an easement. Now, we do have, once in a while, we'll have a situation when there's a landlocked parcel. And what I mean by landlocked is that a parcel is surrounded by other parcels, and they don't have a direct or clear access to a public roadway or a right-of-way. And these FPEs will provide those landlocked parcels a means whereby a landowner can get access to, to a public right-of-way. Now, they can do this when, when they are landlocked. We might have some situations where a parcel has access on one side of their property, they have an FPE on the opposite side of their property, and they think, well, I'd like to use this FPE, force my neighbor to let me use that FPE to get into the backside of my property. That's not an absolute right to do that. If they have reasonable access to another existing public roadway, then they can't force the use of an FPE on their neighbor's property. And here, I'll use a picture for an example here. So I've got two parcels shown here with two stars indicating access to, in the dark green, what is a public right-of-way. And let's say, for example, one of the parcels wants to get access to the lower corner of their yard through the FPE that runs through their neighbor's property. They can't tell the neighbor, well, it's an FPE, you have to let me use it, even though they have reasonable access off of, off of another roadway. So this is kind of a picture example of that. Over the years, I've had many questions, phone calls, input from our city attorney. We have a variety of interesting issues that come up with these federal patent easements, and Joel has reported that we have many legal opinions on file, going back to, from when we were incorporated and since he started working here as well. Now, about five years ago, a little more than five years ago, we were coming up here quite routinely for federal patent easement extinguishments, and at one point, a council member said, okay, what's the reasoning? Why, why are we giving these up? Because it seemed like, you know, they were just so random and sporadic and all over the city, that wasn't a real rhyme or reason to why we were doing that. We used, we have a traffic circulation plan that's coming up on 20 years old, where it focused in the Y area. So the Y area is between Apache Trail and Old West Highway, our rural part of the city, where this consultant looked at all the federal patent easements, and they made a recommendation throughout that area. Keep this one, put a road in this one, extinguish this one. And we would reference that document many years ago when we were up here doing extinguishment presentations. But, you know, the more we use that document and the more we looked at it, we thought, you know, a lot of this makes absolutely no sense. It's as if the consultant didn't drive out here to actually drive these areas and do some ground truthing or figure out, well, this makes no sense, you know, yeah, let's build a road through this huge wash, or here's a, you know, really nice flat piece of land between two existing roads, get rid of that easement. It just didn't make any sense, so we stopped referencing that document. And at the same meeting, years, many years ago, the city council then suggested, okay, well, maybe we need to kind of step back and take a big-picture view of our city and our easements and what we have, what we've given away over the last, you know, 30-plus years, and what do we have left, and what can we do with what we have left? Now, a little bit about the type of extinguishment requests that we have. So in the years that I've been here, they generally fall into one of four categories. This isn't an all-inclusive list, but it's a pretty good representation of what we have. So, for example, when we have a large redevelopment, so for example, the Old West Marketplace on Old West Highway, when they came through, there were several federal patent easements that they extinguished as part of their development process. Or another project, AJ Warehouses near 12th Avenue and Vista and Wikiup, they're planning a, an industrial complex, if you will, and they're looking at extinguishing some easements well, as well. If there's even a smaller building project where it might, you know, they've requested extinguishing that. A lot of them fall into this third category here, where we have a neighbor dispute or a trespass. So we might have an unpermitted structure that was built within the 33-foot easement, or, you know, something's encroached into it, or somebody wants to build in there. Sometimes we'll have illegal or unpermitted structures that are in the FPE. You know, all of a sudden, staff finds out, you know, we've, we've got this structure in the FPE, there's a sale or change of property ownership involved, and all of a sudden, a new owner is like, well, you know, what do you mean I can't use the structure? What do you mean it's unpermitted? What do you mean it's in an FPE? And, you know, it, it's frustrating, it's frustrating for them. And in the past, what we've tended to do was we use the FPE extinguishment process to provide relief for some of these illegal or unpermitted structures, and, and really shouldn't have been, been doing that. Again, here are some picture examples of some of the development-type extinguishments. So on the left, you'll see the Old West Marketplace, you'll see a grid of red shaded areas, those are former FPEs that were extinguished, including utility easements. That was done with the developer's design process. On the right there, in the center, you'll see kind of a inverted T. That's in an area that I was talking about, 12th Avenue between Vista and Wikiup, again, extinguishing some, some FPEs there to accommodate a better land use for an industrial warehouse project. Here's an example of a residential-type extinguishment. So at the very top in the light green area, you'll see a row of structures that encroaches into the FPE. And it's not only encroaching into the road area, but it's also encroaching into an area that's reserved for utility use. So, you know, it may or may not impact the utility company's desire to effectively use that area. So, you know, we come across situations like this, unpermitted structures, we weren't aware of it, and then all of a sudden, they want to, you know, add on or do something else on their property, and we kind of have to be the bearer of bad news and bring it to their attention. Well, you have this unpermitted structure that's illegal, but we have to take care of this. So it puts us into a bit of a, of a quandary on how to, how to move forward, and we don't want to just say, okay, well, we've got a process, just come on down, we'll get rid of this FPE, it's all good, and your structure can stay.
What happens if the utility company doesn't care?
Um, unless.
If it's an issue, if it's a non, the structure's been there and it's been a non-issue for decades.
Twenty years. For decades.
Yeah, I mean.
In, in the vast majority of cases, the utility companies don't know that these encroachments exist until all of a sudden, you know, for some reason, they want to use it. Now, many of these companies will not need to use the entire 66-foot width for their corridors.
Yeah.
I'm aware of one instance on the very east side of the city where there was some issues with an easement, and SRP came through and said, well, we need to keep eight feet, and you need to chop eight feet off of your building. And they did. You can see, you know, the wall came down at eight feet, and there's eight feet of a concrete slab left over, but, you know, of course, SRP has a bit of a heavier hammer than other utility companies do. I mean, they function slightly different than a utility company, but, you know, and that's, that's kind of a rare situation where we've seen that, but they do have that right to do that. So over the last five years, you know, what, what have we done? Well, the previous Public Works Director funded a project with Central Association of Governments, or CAG, where the city hired CAG to do some GIS mapping of all the federal patent easements throughout the city. We need to know at least what we have, you know, what do we have in terms of easements, what do we have in public right-of-way, what have we extinguished, what right-of-way have we gotten rid of? We did all that mapping, and since then, or the CAG did all that mapping for us, and since then, you know, our city GIS staff has been working to verify that data, and, you know, 98% accuracy, I guess we'd say, but once in a while, we might find something that's mapped incorrectly, and then they're doing an excellent job at correcting that. But we have a pretty clear picture now of, okay, what do we have? Where are we at today? And over the last few years, we've still had a few extinguishment requests come through. Since we started working together as staff a little over a year ago on this policy direction, we've been discouraging people from a policy direction, um, we've been discouraging people from applying. Now, it's part of our process, it, it's part of our city code, so they, they can make an application, but we make it clear that if you apply, it's not going to come with a staff recommendation. And they'll say, fine, we'll take our chances with the council. And they'll say, okay, uh, it's a $350 application, non-refundable and, and, uh, we've, over the last 12 months, there's been, uh, interest from about three, and I think there's one application that you're going to hear tomorrow evening from Raquel Schatz. So I'll, I'll leave that to her presentation and, uh, prepare, preparation, uh, for that. So we've been discouraging that, uh, extinguishment process from some, some people. And, so what else did we do as staff? Okay, we identified all these areas, uh, you know, throughout the city that we have. So here, for example, in this, uh, photo, you'll see Broadway Avenue, Goldfield in the dark blue, uh, medium blue, you have Cortez Road and, uh, unlabeled, but I believe it's 16th Avenue to the south. And then, um, in between all the, the smaller, uh, easements, uh, that we have, what I don't show on, on this exhibit is, okay, what out of all of these do we still have? Which ones have been extinguished and, uh, you know, which ones, um, should we keep? But we were looking at the corridor widths themselves. So we have these 66-foot wide easements. It's 33 feet on either side of, of the property line. And, you know, do we need the entire 66 feet? I mean, we talked about, you know, the extinguishing only part of the easement, but just keeping, you know, a little sliver of it for a trail or whatever, a road that we need. And we looked at some different options, but I think what we, uh, what we ended up settling on was, uh, keeping the entire easement, but we're not going to use all 66 feet. We're not going to come in and, and scrape, you know, blade the whole 66-foot corridor down and just put a little, you know, 10-foot trail in the middle of it. Uh, the 66 feet gives us some options, uh, for either a road or a trail or whatever else, uh, we would need to use. And then whatever's left over on the outside within that 66-foot easement is an area for utilities, uh, to use. Uh, and, and this is a, an exhibit from our 2019 Act of Transportation Plan. I apologize if you, everybody's kind of leaning to the left, uh, to, to look at that. Uh, but we used our Act of Transportation Plan in, in helping figure out, okay, you know, what are some of our, the, the major corridors that we, that we need to, to be aware of? Now, in, in taking the long view, what we want to do is, um, take a 75 to 100-year perspective. That doesn't mean we want to take that long, it just means, you know, let's look down the road, way down the road. What do we see? What can we do now as a staff and as a city to prepare ourselves for what this area is going to look like, you know, 75, 100 years from now? And we should stop, um, processing FPE extinguishments because of the convenience to take care of, uh, illegal or unpermitted construction issues. That, that's not right. Uh, but, at the same time, um, you know, I have people come into, to my office and they talk about extinguishments and my, my first response is, nope, we're not going to extinguish it. And then they'll, you know, say, well, but look at this, you know, it doesn't quite make sense. And, and yeah, there are some areas where it just makes no sense, uh, to me as an engineer, uh, to keep, uh, a roadway easement. But it might make sense from a planning standpoint to keep it for other purposes that I'm not aware of, and that's why we're working as a, as a group of staff to do that. So, um, there, there, there still will be, you know, a once in a blue moon, uh, instant, I, I think where we might have to consider extinguishment and easement, uh, you know, for whatever reason, other than, you know, for convenience, uh, for illegal and unpermitted issues. So what we, uh, when I say we, uh, and I'm just one of a, a large group of staff that has been meeting and discussing this, and, and we have many city staff that are, are very aware, we know the roads, we know the areas, we know the, the citizens, and I think we know them better than any consultant could ever, uh, know them. And, uh, I, I think that, that together as a staff, we can come up with this, uh, framework or long, long-range transportation planning. And part of that would include, okay, well, let's start mapping out roads. Let's start mapping out trails that, that, uh, we need and, or that we think we would need down the road and keep those, reserve those. And then perhaps some of those other areas, those other easements that we don't need, we don't have an issue with, with extinguishing. But we need to do that with, with proper, uh, planning. Uh, another, uh, suggestion that the staff came up with was, okay, let's narrow down the criteria for extinguishments. Uh, you know, maybe along, uh, Old West Highway and SR 88, Apache Trail, where we have some really severe, uh, angles, um, at intersections where, uh, we might have to extinguish some things. And we did, uh, one recently within the last year or two, uh, there's a little smoke tree road alignment just on the north side of Phillies. Uh, we did that. It comes right at the intersection of, uh, of the, of, uh, Cortez and, and Old West Highway and it just didn't make sense to keep that for a road. We also need to, uh, come up with some parameters and guidelines for the city to repurchase some of these easements that we got rid of. Uh, we've been extinguishing easements since the early 80s. Uh, many have gone away, you know, 30-plus years ago. And, and then maybe we need to get some of those areas back, but that will come back at a cost. And we need to, you know, stop, uh, extinguishments to reward, um, bad, bad behavior. Another thing too is because we have so many, excuse me, questions from people about easements, uh, we thought, okay, let's put together some education material, put up, uh, a lot of information on our website or maybe, uh, you know, mail out some, uh, information to those owners in the rural area that are impacted by FPEs, so they have a clear understanding. Um, sending that education material to the, to the real estate community as well, uh, so that they're aware of, um, uh, you know, what the impacts are and that they're, they're better prepared when they're representing, uh, potential buyers and sellers. Uh, another option that, uh, that Development Services Department came up with was, okay, well, uh, if, if we're looking at keeping, uh, you know, these easements, maybe the offset to that is maybe we can relax some of our zoning setback distances. And then that'll, uh, help, uh, ease the pain, I guess, uh, for, uh, those easements that we want to, to keep. And, uh, the other recommendation that we have here is to not grant, grant extinguishments, just keep the 66 feet for whatever, roadways, trails, utilities and, uh, you know, it doesn't have to be curb gutter sidewalk, streetlights and whatever. It could be, uh, you know, different surfaces. It could be, you know, horse trails or paths for, you know, runners or a, a variety of uses. But keep that within that 66 feet in those easements that we identify to keep. And, uh, you know, start planning those, uh, road and trail networks. Uh, so the next step then for, for us and, and granted, we, you've heard this from eight months ago and, uh, we need to make some more progress on this. And that is to, uh, come back with a draft policy and, uh, present it to, uh, council for consideration, uh, perhaps approval, or perhaps we need to get back to the drawing board and make some, some changes to that. Uh, come back with some, uh, proposed revised zoning setbacks in the areas, uh, that are covered by the Act of Transportation Plan. And then we would have to amend an update as necessary, the section in our city code that I've got listed here, 1324, that talks about roadway abandonments and right of way easements. Um, I, I threw out a lot of, uh, information. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions or-
Mr. Mayor.
Any comments that you may have? Okay.
Emile, I have two questions and actually they're more for clarification than anything. Um, on the FPE 101, there's on page, the fifth page of that, let me find it. One, two, three, four, five.
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
It clearly says, "FPEs are not public transportation thoroughfares, blah, 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 blah. General public cannot use them for recreation." What is, what does recreation mean specifically?
Well, uh, I'll answer it generally. I mean, uh, uh, recreation could be horse riding, uh, could be quad riding, uh, mountain bike riding.
So you're talking strictly recreation?
Hiking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can't charge for it though.
Yeah. My question though goes into a little bit more about that.
No, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I apologize.
Yeah.
Am I in planning and zoning? No, it, may I interrupt?
Yes.
To answer that question of recreation, that means there's no rights that's given by these FPEs that says, and it could be used for recreation. That's what it means. It just says, um, "Public roadway purposes."
Okay. Um, but over on the second page, you said it's, the land is privately owned. The underlying land is still owned by the property owner, right?
Correct.
Um, if they own the land, why can't they use it for recreation on their own, where, where it's on their property?
They can for themselves.
Oh, okay, well, it doesn't-
But where, where the confusion comes in is, uh, some, some people don't have an issue with allowing neighbors or quad riders to come through the FPEs and, and some people do. And, uh, technically, it is private property, it is not an automatic, uh, granted public access to, to go through it just because that easement is there. Uh, I'll be a little blunt and say, it's my easement, it's my easement, not theirs. If I decide to build a roadway, you know, then, you know, that land better be unencumbered and free and ready to go for me to put a road in there.
Okay. Yeah, but the person who owns the property can use that, that piece of city, the FPE, however they wish to?
Yeah, and that, and that is part of the education process that we need to do because if, if you look at, uh, uh, some of our GIS mapping, you'll see where we have FPEs, where we do not have a road, but we have fences that are set back and we have this 66-foot corridor of private land that neither of the neighbors are, are using that end up being problematic. You know, they, it could be, uh, you know, a place for somebody to, to dump or cut through or, uh, the things of that nature. So, uh, and, and we have, uh, you know, it, it's six one-way, half dozen the other. Um, some people put fences at the FPE lines and some people put them at, uh, at the property lines and, uh, some people actually encroach beyond, uh, property lines. But, um, part of the education is, uh, we need to make it clear, says, okay, if you want to put a fence in there, if you want to use that private land of yours, uh, in, inside of our easement, you know, that's fine. But let's say 15 years from now, uh, we decide to build a road or a trail, then you will need to move that fence, uh, at your cost to that 33-foot line.
That led to my next question because on the third page where you talk about the six utilities that still have the right, and if they apply to the city and pay their $300 and the city extinguishes the FPE, that doesn't stop any of these utilities 10 years later coming along and saying, "I'm going to dig up your yard and I'm going to take your fence down and there's nothing." Cause if they don't go to the utility and get them to extinguish it, then that utility still has the right to come and dig up somebody's yard.
Correct. Now, as an example, I, I know of many situations where SRP will, uh, talk to the neighbors and say, hey, all we need is a, a gate. If you've got a gate there, that's fine. Can, can we just, uh, daisy chain a lock, our lock onto that? So if we ever have to get into the power pole, then, uh, we can just unlock our lock and get in and do our work and leave and we'll lock your gate back up. Uh, there, there's a lot of that, uh, coordination with utilities as well. Now, I, I also like to add, um, if we, when we do extinguish a road easement and, uh, a neighbor wants to apply for a building permit, and Larry might be able to correct me if I'm incorrect on this, but, um, they will not issue a building permit where the building would encroach into that 33-foot easement, because they are still respecting the fact that the utility has, uh, utilities have rights to use that. Extinguishing the road easement, what it does essentially is increase a building envelope on a property for somebody to have more space to build something on.
That's right. And they would have to get SRP and everyone else to extinguish it also before we can allow the encroachment into that area.
Correct. And we, and we would, and they would have to verify that to us as part of their building permit application.
So, Mayor? That brings up one of my questions in regards to, um, one of the potential options that you, that staff was talking about is, uh, relaxing setbacks. So if we're not issuing building permits in the FPE to begin with, why would we need to really reduce setbacks?
Well, I'll let, uh, I'll let Larry take this one.
Sure, well, one of the biggest, one of the many reasons people ask for these to be extinguished is because on an RSGR, RS 54, RS 54 is a little bit different setbacks, but you have a 40-foot front, 40-foot rear, 20 feet on the side. So we thought, well, if we went to 25 on the front, maybe 25 on the rear, we still have to get through some of the, the buildings that have equine, because they have special setbacks and all that. But it gives them, they still can't build in the 33 feet, so we don't measure the setback, so it's 33 plus 40. It's 33 plus 20. So now you look at a lot and you have easements on three sides, so your front setback is actually 73 feet from what your property line is.
Okay.
So that's why we're thinking of, well, at least if it's still 33 feet, we, you'd get an extra 15 feet if you went from 40 down to 25, for example.
Okay.
So we measure all the setbacks from the FPE line, not from the property line.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
Um, and then in terms of this GIS project that you guys have done over the last several years, um, do we notice problem areas it, within the city? I, I mean, I, I would assume we're talking more on the northern end, the larger lots is where we're going to see more problems and inside the, inside the, the core of the city. But do we notice any of those challenges and what we're trying to do? Because then creating different, uh, potential regulations, I, I mean, we have to think about that on a holistic level across the city, so.
Yes, and, so what this GIS, uh, mapping effort did was, okay, we, we've mapped all the, the FPEs, rights of way, extinguishments, whatever. Uh, and then we have our aerial photography that we can dovetail and put, and put the two pieces together. And that's where we start seeing, uh, some of the issues, you know, some areas are okay and some areas we, we have some problems with. So, part of our planning then that we would need to look at is, okay, there might be an easement that we want to, to keep, that we're going to put a road in, that has an encroachment into it. There might be a, an easement that we want to keep, that's perfectly fine and doesn't have anything wrong with it. Uh, there might be, uh, easements that we don't have a, an issue, uh, using or seeing the need for anymore and we can get rid of, that has an encroachment into it. What do we do then? You know, if we're going to get rid of the easement? Does it matter? Do we, you know, call up the utility companies and say, hey, uh, you know, neighbor ABC has a big shed in your utility easement? You know, the, the, things like that, that, that we're going to need to look at. What I want to avoid or, uh, make sure that we don't do is that we start planning roads and trails and things of that nature, uh, you know, taking corners and avoiding where these encroachments exist, where these unpermitted structures exist. I don't want to, uh, do that. I think we need to plan these things with, you know, what's best for the city, what's best for a road, what's best for a trail. And if there's a, an encroachment or an unpermitted structure in that area, then we will have to deal with that at the point in time when we do build a road. I mean, let's say if we plan out a network now and we're not going to build a road for 10 years, do we tell the neighbor now, get your stuff out of the easement? Cause we may build a road in 10 or 15 years, or we just let them know, hey, you know, you've got a, uh, a, a problem here, um, we're not building a road yet, but when we do, we'll let you know.
So then, is there potentially a point in time, once we get through this process, that we may actually do city-initiated, uh, extinguishments?
Uh-
I mean, if we determine that we're not going to use that, that easement-
We-
Would we start that or would we let the neighbors know or the, the residents know, hey, if you want to do this, you can do it, but here's the cost for that?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, my preference is at this point in time, is to, uh, to leave that as a owner-initiated process instead of city-initiated. You know, I mean, we, we can wait until the owners want to do something with their property and then it just makes sense to, you know, to deal with it then.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question. Um, I think it's on page eight, Matt. And this might be more of a question for you, Joel, but when it says, if an FPE is not enforced, property owners can always file, and it says, depending on circumstances in court, action for implied easement, easement by necessity or adverse possession. How does that then affect what the city's doing in terms of, of that 33 feet?
Well, it doesn't really benefit, except when they go to court, a judge is going to decide whether that property is going to be, uh, conveyed to someone or done by the court. That's what in, uh, that's what adverse possession is. So it gets before a judge, especially if there's been a dispute. And that would, that's helpful in certain circumstances when the council doesn't want to get in the middle of it. And there's really no reason to, um- And there's really no reason to, to extinguish it. But it is helpful when it goes before a judge because then it's on a judge to decide, okay, was it adverse possession? Did they openly, it's called open and notoriously, that's what they call it under the law. And that means they were obvious about using or taking that property, using it for ten years. Ten years is the usual statute limitations.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? My only question is on the aspect is, or I'm gonna say make a statement is, sometimes that we've had people come in before us or even, you know, I've been contacted in trying to make the use of the FPEs for recreation, even though they are, you know, currently being fenced off. People have their fence on the property line and the FPE is not being used by the city. And they're wanting them, wanting us to open them up. And this is not going to happen as far as if we decide to, I'll say, limit the, I'll say, abandonment of them, even though they may not be used today, we're not opening them up. Is that not correct?
That's correct. We would open them up when, at whatever point in the future, we would need them.
But the individual property owner could allow the access, like for the horse trails, is what you're talking about.
Well, not only horse trails, but also trails in general.
Right.
And it, but it's not a right that because the city is not being used, we're not forcing people to say, okay, you have to open them up for, I'll say, the general public to go through.
Yeah, we would only open them up for a road or a trail, not for, I wouldn't force anybody to open it up just to allow a neighbor to walk through or ride their quad through it, through that area.
And if we're doing a trail, it would be something that the city is building.
Correct. Building and maintaining.
Yes.
Okay.
Emile, does all properties in the city limits have an FPE on them?
Um.
Depends.
Yeah, there are quite a few in the rural area, the Y area. The northwest area, not so much. The southwest area where we have a lot of subdivisions, very little.
I think being able to see that GIS map would really be helpful.
Okay.
At least just for me because I can visualize where we're at in that.
So, Your Honor, I think what we're looking for, I mean, is work session tonight, great discussion. This gives us some great thoughts. We can email, we can get that link out on GIS and let's get familiar with it. But I still like the idea that it's been twenty years since we've really reviewed it, that we get, move forward with our own staff, our own group, looking at it and based on the active transportation study and what we know, come back and work through, working with you on a policy that we could use for the next twenty years or the next thirty years. If that's something that's okay and I see some head nodding, we'll get, we'll get going on that.
When, so Brayden, when you say that you wanna see the GIS, are you looking for this? Are you wanting, before you move forward with any kind of direction or policy changes, are you saying that you wanna see like the problem areas or what is it that you're asking specifically?
Well, I know that there was talk about ones that we've extinguished over the last thirty years and potentially ones that we might look at trying to buy back or obtain again. I think really just seeing and visualizing what that looks like if we're developing a twenty-year plan, having a good knowledge of the inventory that's available. And then also being able to know, you know, what might we have to consider. I think if there's a problem area, specifically, you know, we might want to target that area to fix whatever those problems may be. But I don't necessarily know yet what that looks like because I can't visualize the whole city at a top-down view. I mean, certain areas help me and I know kind of some of the problem areas, but those are one-off situations where you might have, you know, some development on that property or on that easement versus other areas where you don't, or you might have areas where gates, like Chip was saying, you know, you have, this is gated off, but nothing's there. So it's, yeah.
I have to agree. I think a visual would be good so that we have a, just an idea. I agree. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Yeah, that was the whole reason for that mapping exercise to begin with, but it is a great tool to look at.
Absolutely.
And Emile, can't we access that through the city website as well, all of the GIS maps?
Not that one.
I think there's, there's a lot more available for staff viewing than there is for public viewing, so I'll need to.
Make a larger.
To see what we can do, see what's available on the public website, but maybe we need to get a, one of our city internal links to look at.
I don't think FPEs are, I use those maps way too often. I don't think FPEs are on there.
Okay.
So then what would that look like? Is that something you would have to do kind of individually with council or is it something that would get done at one of the meetings? What would that look like?
Do you know enough, Emile? So, Matt, do we know enough from an IT standpoint and Larry that we could flip that switch? Yeah. So one of my thoughts as you're bringing that up is, so those are research ideas. I just wanna take a step back of, so your staff right now, we're going without a roadmap. We're tackling these as they come in. So you just had one last week, resident come in. You had one on Eighteenth Avenue in Goldfield. So we've had two in the last two months. The one that I saw on Old West Highway, maybe there is a triangle and it makes a lot of sense to, you know, abandon. And so you're gonna still have those, but there's gonna be, like we said, more and more where, from my standpoint, I really would love to get some guideposts. What is, what are the, I guess, the lack of a better term, if you go bowling and be able to keep the ball and the the ball and the, what are those called? The bumpers, right, Matt?
Gutters.
Gutters.
Gutter bumpers. That's what we need from council to help us out. And I think we don't need to spend a consultant. We don't need to go out. We're gonna have Emile come back and do this. This part right here, we wanna be able to flip the switch somehow, Larry and Matt and with our GIS. We just have so much more information than we did twenty years ago to get data in front of you, to study it up. So you can see where there are problem areas and maybe strategically we wanna focus on.
Yeah, I actually had a business owner reach out to me this last week in regards to an easement off their property and they were having some problems with, because it's a commercial residential back-to-back property and they were having some challenges. And it was interesting to figure out what actually was the easement versus what wasn't.
Well, the reason that I'd like to see it is because I don't think one size fits all either.
Right.
And I think in order to proceed, it would be helpful to have a little, for me, I think it would be helpful to.
So some of these, I could, Mayor, some of these are probably done before nineteen seventy-eight by the county. And so we're kinda living with the sins of that. And one of the rationales we get is, well, you did that one, so you should do this one. Without, you know, and at a certain point, you could see, well, geez, that might make sense because we've gotten rid of so many that it's like, that's a lot of territory to buy back. In other cases, I like to use Tenth Avenue, which is this one. We have right-of-way on this end, there's not one FPE that's been given up except at Goldfield. So does, so one of the original thoughts was, well, maybe we do, keep the even numbers and do something different with the odds, you know, the Eighth and the Tenth and the Twelfth Avenue. So again, I think you're right. It's not one size fits all and you do have to, but so many of these have given up without any forethought. Yes, week's wash was in the way or, you know, I'm mad at my neighbor. So I just think having this discussion helps everybody. And you can see, maybe some are a point of no return. Maybe it's too late to turn back the clock. But on what, Emile and I had great discussions about this back in the day, but my big one was Plaza. Plaza goes through, it starts, well, we gave it up here. But if you look at it, it's pretty much wide open all the way.
All the way up.
All the way up.
To Los Angeles.
As an easement. But then we had some requests in here for some washes that, oh, well, I don't like horses going through. There are dog walkers. I wanna get rid of this. Well, because two people decided they don't like the dog walkers or they like the horses but not the dog walkers, we could have ended up giving up Plaza all the way through there. So it's just, again, thinking long range. This is an area of the city, by the way, where we haven't been, we haven't had a lot of requests. And again, some of them make sense, right through the middle of a mobile home park, of course. I think it's this one that had, came up recently, this one that, so that could have been given up years ago. So again, just more.
And this is, this, we can't pull up.
Yeah, most cities don't publish the right-of-way on the public viewer, but we can certainly get you the link. I don't see why we can't get you the link.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the biggest takeaway from this then that I'm getting is, we need to change our mindset and quit just saying, oh, well, they got a good reason and good excuse for their convenience. We need to just quit giving up FPEs just for somebody's convenience. We need to really see that there's a reason for the city to give it up.
I think so. I think that's a perfect takeaway.
Let me see the one that's abandoned all the way across here. It's not there.
And then that small part.
My biggest thing that I've watched, Councilmember, Your Honor, is that the abstract, tonight, quiet, relaxed, no problem. The tough is when they're in front of you. And so the policy document, the guideposts I talked about, when you make those decisions ahead of time, you're able to say, we understand, we understand this is tough and we're here to do another fifty-year discussion or twenty-five-year discussion and we've set aside this. And then I see councils having a little bit better chance of being able to do that. So that's why I say definitely, Council, we can keep doing that, keep evaluating that, but let's get going on having staff do a, do a study on it and evaluate those tougher areas and get this, we need to get this link. Let's figure out a way, JC. We're just, we're getting better at this every day. We have a little division that does maps and it really is an amazing tool to be able to get in and see kinda these issues.
Anyone else?
That's the fifty thousand dollar map right there. No, CAG was really good and helpful to kinda get this project off the ground. I really, at a time when they were kinda struggling and they could, they needed the the work to do. So it was a good partnership we had with them.
Can you guys update this as you, anything's changed?
This updates, you know, as if, if say tomorrow night, a request came through and you agreed to extinguish that easement, we would update this GIS map, for example. But that's the way with our zoning maps and the project viewers, all that is being updated. Address maps, all that changes.
Okay, Emile.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Presentation and discussion on zoning premiers, permit, anyway, that word.
Parameters.
Parameters. There we are. Thank you. Including height, permitted uses, et cetera.
How much time do I have, Joel?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Okay.
Time.
Well, we'll try to move as fast as I can. This is a presentation that was done last November. If anybody else wants to save themselves, they can, they can leave too. I don't think we need a sergeant-at-arms or a chief-at-arms right now either. You wanna take the rest of the night off. All right. So we have had a couple of discussions about downtown over the years, over a long time. The reason it's kinda coming back, and I'll get to it at the end, is that we're seeing a lot of proposals. If you haven't seen the map that JC produced for Bryant that showed, you know, nine hundred units coming, that number could easily be twelve or fifteen hundred. Some of them are right in the downtown. So we had a proposal, I don't know, a year ago that was gonna go four stories, kinda got everybody's attention. We think it was at the wrong location. We tried to convince the developers of that. But there's more coming and it's not just all gonna happen in the state lands. So I think it's a new council. I think it's timely to kinda talk about this. So some of you have seen this before, just like, whoop, I lost Emile already. See? Emile did a great job with that presentation, so. Well, Coase, I kinda wanna walk through, you know, ten, fifteen quick slides of what downtown used to look like, some of the previous planning efforts over the years since the nineties. Planning, we think, makes sense, just like the discussion we had. We think it's good to look forward. What are the opportunities? What are the constraints? And some things have happened because there has been some good planning, but I think a little bit more. Again, I talk a little bit at the end about what is the vision? How do we get a sense of place here, a sense of community that folks on the new three thousand acres might wanna come up and shop at all our wonderful places up here? And then we'll talk a little bit at the end. I kinda, if you were going over the slides, I kinda rearranged them a little bit so they're not in the exact same order. So if Tess, if you asked me a question, what about slide number five? It may not be slide number five, but it's still in here. I guarantee it. So again, going back in nineteen thirty-seven, virtually no development, dirt road that was part of the dam construction. Still US sixty, but kind of a two-lane road, I'm sure, just like all our blue highways have been. Early on, nineteen fifty-three, you can start seeing some of those parceling get created up here. I think that's all federal land that starts going back to the very last discussion we had. And you can see kinda the inklings of things happening in the downtown area. A lot happens between, in the next twenty years, you can see the Grand Hotel built. This is Road Haven, I believe. You can see some of these other developments start filling in. And even when you, in the Bashes Center, you can see happening. And this photo, again, these, you know, ten years later, they were not filled in yet, you know, these major, this is four hundred units. So you can just see the evolution of how things don't happen overnight, but they slowly infill. And you'll notice a lot of these parcels that we're getting talked about right now are, they're still vacant even today, but I don't think for much longer. Minimal change in the early nineties, post office was built. You see the civic buildings up here. You see the county center being built. City Hall expands a little bit. Again, you see these developments kinda happen at the periphery of the downtown. The Grand Hotel hadn't been open for twenty years or more, but it closed down. Frye Center was built. County complex grows. City Hall complex obviously grows in two thousand and four. I deleted that one. That's now a medical office now. But those you can see happen off of Phelps Drive in this area, crossings, apartments. Again, demolished, so took a while. City got it down and ready for redevelopment, but then the recession happened. So we had a recession that not just happened in two thousand and eight or nine, but it had some long-lasting effects, especially for the downtown area. And then we have the new Frye's area. But again, you look at some of these same parcels, they've been vacant now for quite some time since the very first nineteen thirty-seven photograph. We had the apartments that were downtown that were demolished with the land swap in the beginning of Flatiron Park. And you can see, obviously, way back on earlier photos, but all these things have obviously filled in here. And then I wanted to kinda go through the sequence of plans. So there was a plan in the late nineties called Visualize Downtown AJ. There was another effort called Downtown Alive, How to Make It Happen. Some of you may have, I'll show some pictures of some of these in a minute. Superstition Square, really, I think, was the downtown LLC that was trying to buy up all the property. There was some effort there and the Urban Land Institute was involved in some of those discussions. Then the city itself is doing a variety of redevelopment revitalization plans. Now it's called the Old West Highway Redevelopment Area. So Ilan Ballander was here last year and updated. We had to update that twice because of a state statute change. So he was here in two thousand and twenty updating that redevelopment area. Then the DRIS was done in two thousand and ten, the Downtown Revitalization Implementation Strategy. I'll go through that real quick. And then we kind of had these series of plans that were done by ASU students or some work that was done in-house to try to get some consensus around that and help maybe further the ideas of what may have happened in these earlier plans. And then downtown, we have a specific element in the current general plan, just on downtown. And that element does call for us to coalesce all these plans into, into a newer physical-type plan for downtown. So this is what I call a physical plan, not just pretty pictures, but you can see from a plan that happened in the nineties that the focal point actually came out of this plan. That planning does matter and things do happen. There was calls for, you know, this is where Flatiron Park is, but there are calls for amphitheaters and parks and things like that. So some of the things about Restaurant Row kind of happened. Trailhead Marketplace was really, was this here. You see the Frye's. Coming up with a Main Street concept was all because there was a plan. So then, again, I just go through these real quick, but there were a series of these redevelopment plans for downtown that had, over the years, different boundaries. They coalesced into eventually creating a TIF district, Tax and Recommission Financing District, which happened for a while because the state said it was okay and then the state said it wasn't okay. And then, but a lot of the streetscaping that you And then, um, but a lot of the streetscaping that you see downtown and the median improvements and Phelps Drive all were funded by Tax Incentive Financing, um, which you can do in 49 other states except this one. So again, the concepts for downtown have always been the same, about pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use housing, high-density housing, some market-rate housing in the downtown. Again, some of you may saw this either a few months ago when I presented it, but this was a plan where, uh, again, a lot of effort was, uh, put forth to realign Idaho around the downtown, if you will, try to create this mixed-use, walkable downtown. Um, hard to move a state highway, as we all know. Um, and then you see Phelps Drive here. And then some housing related to the college, um, et cetera. But you see a lot higher density for, for retail, entertainment, mixed-use, live-work units, et cetera, some open space. Um, this, again, is just kind of a, a different look. It starts looking at kinda the, the height of the buildings and stuff along this, but essentially is the same, uh, document that looks at, um, this one doesn't quite show it of, of moving Idaho, but. And then the DRIS came along in 2010. There were, um, I'll get, basically, they didn't, they looked at three areas of downtown and the commercial zones, if you will, as you come into the city, and what density, land uses we're talking about, and more low-density on the western part of the city on Apache Trail. Some sort of transition along the main spine of Apache Trail, and then having a higher-density downtown core. At this time, the TIF was still available, so there was a lot of action and activity related into creating a vibrant downtown. And there were, I think, 160 ideas, tasks in there, and the city, I think, accomplished a lot by doing half of them, but then, um, the funding source kinda went away. And then some, I, some things didn't happen because there wasn't funding, or, again, they just didn't work out. But by and large, I think the city did a great job of getting a lot of stuff done with the opportunity that they had before. And then, um, the city itself tried to put some plans together, but you see they're not really, this is like what I would call like a detailed physical plan. This is for the, the BLM slash county land, but still kind of a open swath, not really, you don't really get a sense of what the expectation is here. You couldn't give this to a developer and say, this is what we want to happen here. Um, saying this was a student-led project, again, it more of a, um, kind of a graphic-looking type plan that was done in 2012, kind of showing some, the focal point and some other things that were already there. But again, all these things talk about, how do we invigorate downtown? How do we get a downtown? Um, the general plan, as I said, we, we ended up working with Elon and, and took about four different districts, if you will, and came up with what would be, you know, within a quarter mile or a half a mile to figure out where, where should downtown be? So this is really what we're calling the downtown limits. It's different than the redevelopment, um, the Old West Highway one. But really, this is the map that's in the downtown, in the general plan that says, you know, this is really what the limits of downtown are. Um, I was gonna say, some of this could be redeveloped over time. This is an older mobile home park. If real estate values change, not only would we see redevelopment of, say, the old, uh, Bashes Plaza or vacant land. Um, God forbid, the Social Security Administration does leave, that's a redevelopment site. So you do have to think ahead as to how things fit together and, and how to anticipate those things. Um, but I would say that it's really, this would be, I would call, more of a physical plan. We don't really have that where you, like I said, you could show a developer. Um, so because of planning, I think what has happened, a lot of the streetscaping on Phelps, North Apache Trail, Plaza, the median enhancements, um, we're working on public art. Uh, as you know, we have a Public Arts Commission. Uh, we did a commercial rehab program for a while with some federal money, but we were hampered by the floodplain on the north side of the trail. Uh, Flatiron, I think, is a splendid example of some advanced planning and, and what downtown could be. Horizon, uh, Health and Wellness, um, again, the Focal Point, Don's Monument. Those are kind of the core things that you can build from. Uh, this is, again, our attempt to try to splice in, if you will, what would a street network? This is really what's missing here. If you wanna have a walkable downtown, all you really have is some vacant 17-acre, 22-acre parcels, 22-acre parcels, without thinking of how development relates to each other, and I'll, I'll get to that point in a second as well. Um, again, you've seen these, you live here, you see all the great things that can happen with, uh, some forethought. Um, so Horizon Health, this area here, again, I think a great community project, the Gardens. Um, that, uh, three-story building is, was kinda new. That was kind of a groundbreaker for the city to go a three-story building. That was different. Um, I'm gonna go back up here too. Again, some of these older plans, we show these washes here as being, you know, connectivity, pedestrian connectivity. One of the plans calls for this being like a trailhead. So again, you're out on the state land, BLM land, and you wanna come into downtown. This was a former park, um, could still be. Um, again, you've seen these. Um, just the community garden, it does, the, the idea that you have Flatiron Park, you have this land that's, uh, the county, uh, has a patent on. And then this is where, when there's not COVID, there's, uh, there's, um, farmers' markets and festivals, and that's really what activate this space downtown. That's all the ingredients are here to do that. Again, Flatiron Park was a great success, is a great success story. It's really just phase one. And a lot more can happen with the Great Lawn and the Blues and Brews Festival that Bryant mentioned earlier, the Think Desert and the Think Water, uh, areas up in here. Uh, tremendous asset for the downtown, and when you think about it, how those three parks, if you will, kind of link each other. This is what TIF can do. This is what putting public infrastructure and setting the table, as I call it, for future development. So, so what does the city think of? What is the heart of the city? We've had all these plans from the 90s. Um, there are strengths, again, still a blank canvas, but that canvas is getting, uh, painted over soon, I think. Uh, some great scenic views, the views of the goldfields, Usury Mountain, uh, obviously, the, uh, superstitions, the park, the streetscaping, the potential for the county BLM open space. Again, what I would say is, what is the clear vision? What do we want downtown? What does it look like? What is the density? What is the mix? Is it pedestrian-friendly? The funding tool is gone. Um, I think the DRIS efforts have run their course. They're, they're 2010, now it's 2020. We were meeting, you know, eight, 10 times a year on a downtown tack. We meet about once a year now. So I think we did half the plan, but, and we did as much as we could. Um, and I think it's time to kinda reignite the fire, reignite the fire for downtown.
For sure.
So, again, this is our poor attempt, um, as we're city planners, but I'm not like a landscape architect. I can't really, uh, kinda put it together. I can kinda conceptualize. How does all this stuff stitch together? And I'll show you in a second here, but in this blue area, um, this is owned by Ness. This is Apache Junction Town Center, the old hotel site. This was now the Barclay Group. It was all owned. When you had really three landowners downtown, when you had the Apache Junction Town Center or WGG Partners, you had Ness, you had the county, you have, uh, TJ's Plaza. That's what developers do. They try to control land, and then they can kinda, um, you know, make things happen. Um, I still think this is a great use of this space, even though a lot of it was eaten up here by the roundabout. Um, again, there was talk years ago of the Boys and Girls Club coming here. But again, having a park here, having a park here, thinking of this as a park. And why would you wanna, not just the view, but you have all these three great amenities of why developers would wanna come here and have mixed-use housing, or restaurants, or a captive audience, if you will. Um, so this is kinda what's going on now. So this is the slides that aren't in your slideshow that I, I, uh, but GIS put this together for me. So right now, you still have WGG Partners owns this, about 17, 18 acres. They own this three-and-a-half acres here still. This is 22-and-a-half acres. And then this is where that four-story building. And so you know, we have a proposal coming in on this 22 acres. It's mixed-use, it's multifamily, that's a little bit of single-family. Um, if this thing goes, others are looking at quite closely. This are three five-acre parcels. They're all zoned RSGR. So if you go back to the purple map, Royal Palm is kinda the end of our, our downtown. Um, there's a group right now that's trying to make sure, or acquire all three of these, so they can put a project together. So this could be 300, 400 units on this site. This could be 150 to 200 units. This could be 100 units. Um, this 10 acres.
Larry, when you say units, what are you referring to?
Dwelling units, dwelling units.
Dwelling, six, family.
Yeah, like 300 apartments. No, we're talking, um, apartments, or they could be townhomes, or they could be another, again, higher density. What we're looking for, if you want to have a downtown, if you make it all single-family, then you'll be redoing it 50 to 75 years from now. Once you build something, it's gonna be here for 75 to 100 years.
Well, that's what I thought. If that's our downtown, why are we even talking about having any zoning for single-family dwellings?
We're not.
We're not. That's the point of the discussion. Um, but right now, this is zoned for single-family. This is zoned for 12 manufactured homes, right there, today. So there's three manufactured homes and a site-built home on this property. This in the blue, again, one ownership, it's about a little less than 15 acres. That's actually zoned, uh, RM2 for 40 units an acre. So, um, you have this, what cities don't have, and Joel will be, you know, chime in here, but we can't just go out and rezone this. It'd be nice if we had the tool and said, you know, we did this master plan, we're gonna rezone it, and then we'd have all these 207 things that would be coming in here. Why did you rezone my property? Well, because we had a downtown, we had a different vision property owner than maybe you had. And they could say, well, you know, I had this ready to go. I, I had, uh, four manufactured home lots ready to go here. And we say, well, we think, so we don't have to do a rezoning, but we can't go out. I mean, the city does comprehensive rezonings, but it's very painful and tedious, and some of you may have been here in 2013 and '14, I think, when that happened. So the point of this slide, this is the Ness property, is we're getting proposals all the time now. This property has an offer on it. It's been accepted. It's been extended for a year. This was another 200 or 300 apartments. So the look and feel of this is gonna change. My concern is that we get a development here that they kinda take care of themselves. And they don't think about how this 17 acres works with this 17 acres, or works with this 17 acres, or works. And that this will, we'll have five, six projects here. But none of them relate to what is the real look and feel? How do they connect to each other? If I live here and I wanna get over to the farmer's market, I guess I can get in my car and I can go over here? Or are we gonna have trail systems and, and?
Is that gonna be a park, for example, right?
Is this gonna be a park, for example? I think the county, I mean, we're, we're working on stormwater maybe, but, but, again, what is, how's this development? Then there's some land in between. And so we've had conversations, there were a couple folks here that wanted to sell to these folks when they were doing the four-story building. So, yeah, they're ready to move along. Um, this, this property here is 10 acres. The owner is either elderly or deceased. No one knows. Every developer we've talked to have tried to get a hold of this. But obviously, um, it would be an addition to this, would be a different look and feel. Again, you have Frye's, et cetera. So that's the point of this, is, I guess, from my perspective, how do we visualize it? We can't go to a developer and say, you know, that pretty plan that had all the colors and all the streets connected. We just have 100 acres of vacant land that we know is gonna be developed. And is there a mechanism for us to kinda make sure that, we got one chance to do it. We got one chance to do it right.
That's right.
And everything, every decision kinda feeds on the other. It's kinda like the, uh, extinguished FPE. Oh, we did that one, so we're gonna do that one and that one. So you have to think of these holistically, that, that they do need to work together. So, again, I, uh, part of the discussion was, um, we have all the policy ideas in framework. We kinda know what we want, and we can describe it on paper, but we can't describe it to a developer and say, okay, you come in with a plan, and now you've obliterated this wash. But we really thought of this as a way for people to get, you know, into the downtown, or they should, they could live here and they could walk to Frye's, or they could get over to Flatiron Park. And this was our crude attempt at doing that, to show some sort of internal street network. When we did the active transportation plan, um, we actually overlaid like a historic, like a grid pattern. So you may have, uh, seen that document. That's even much harder to superimpose on this. You recall, we had discussions about, we showed you, uh, some of you weren't on the council then, but, you know, what does a six-lane highway do through the middle of your downtown? Do you have a downtown? And then we showed an example in California where they kinda right-sized that road and kinda put shops and buildings up there and had more of a pedestrian environment there. Um, we don't have that. I think we have all the ingredients that you normally see in a downtown, that people would love to see in a downtown, a grocery store, two drugstores, um, some bars and restaurants and entertainment. We have all that here, um, and you don't wanna displace any of that. Um, but how does it, how does it, how does it grow from here?
Larry, wouldn't it, wouldn't it make sense if we go back to, if we go back, let me go back a couple pages, where you have the one with Ness and AJ Town Center?
All right.
Wouldn't it make sense if we looked at it by, as far as prioritizing? Start with one area and kinda prioritize one area. Okay, what would you envision, or what would you wanna see here? And then kind of expand that out to the different areas behind. My thought is the area be at the focal point. Initially, this is my thought. The area behind the focal point, would, we would wanna start on that and prioritize. What would that look like? How high? What if, what do we want there? Mixed use, this, that? And kinda go from there and add in, you know, your walkability, your pedestrian-friendly, your trails and things like that. It just seems like instead of looking at each one and going, okay, well, what do you want? That it would be a, a better idea to narrow it down, get a little more concise idea, but, but pri, through prioritizing the sections.
Well, I think, I think what's driving it is the developers are driving it. And we have little ability to do that, although this has always been a high priority, and we've been, like here, I know last year there were plans to put, to put single-family here. And we've had six developments that have been proposed here, and we've been holding out till we get one that's a high density. So now we got one, so I'm, I like where you're going, but I think this.
So like, or? But I would say the only cap.
This one's coming first, though.
Yeah, so Larry, that would be the thing. So for this one, so you, you got the whole private property rights, right? And, and we have interest now. You have laid out a plan. So the six that have come and gone were not consistent. The seventh now is consistent with some higher density, meaning either apartments or condos, I don't know, 12 units per acre?
Uh, I think he's actually doing 19 or 20 overall. So he's gonna have two different products. He's gonna have single-family, but they're townhomes, so they're bigger buildings, they're two-story buildings, and he'll maybe have some three-story, um, I think, 10 or 12 apartment buildings.
And it's on the east.
A particular developer.
And it's on the east side of Idaho.
East side of.
Which is kinda one element too, which is south of this BLM land, which we're working with. Um, I don't know if Emile's still here, but he's working very closely with, um, a longstanding policy, which is to help manage some of the downflow waters that have come in. And we can help some of those situations with your downtown to help protect some of the value. So that can also be a potential open-space area that connects to both, both parks, I say. But other than that one, Larry, would you say that the vice mayor's kinda right? Where we could start prioritizing with the plan and, and what you call stitch from TJ's, um, Ness is up and over to the Town Center too?
Well, I'm, what I'm, I guess I'm talking about is, at least from this pedestrian environment, to me, um, how do these, it's, it's truly, how do these connect to each other? Is everything just gonna have a six-foot wall around it, like we see with the suburban-type developments? Some of those more, um, those type of parameters, I think when a developer comes in, it'd be nice to say, you know, here's what, I'll go back to this again. This is our crude attempt to say, you know, here's a parcel, Mr. Ness, here's another parcel you could develop. You know, these things can be connected. We, we did work with him to build this trail. We actually have a trail that Parks put in here. And then, um, I know Sim has talked about, you know, maybe having another trail on this weird parcel that he's got here. But that way, these people can get there. But, but what is the, I'm trying to use that GIS idea. What fits over the top of this that kinda stitches it all together, that these things connect to each other? So also, that you're not just going in the gated community and, and all that, that there is, I don't know how to describe that, Brian, but I, I, that's kinda what I'm talking about, is to me, that physical plan that is better than what we did here, and better than anybody else has done.
Isn't this what we could give to a developer, or any developers, and say, this is what we envisioned, and this is what we would like you to build? and say, this is what we envisioned, and this is what we would like you to build? Or is that just unrealistic?
Be more refined. I think this, I think it needs to be more refined. I think we have enough documents there that in principle, well, that's what we did with the general plan. We took all those ten, twelve documents. We kind of looked at them all and said, here's the common themes, here's what we've heard from the community over the years. And from a policy perspective or the feel of it, we kind of know maybe what we want. But we don't know how all these things kind of link with each other, is what I'm saying. Like I said, you got three park potentials down here, but if I live in one of these, how could I easily get to this park? Or how could I easily get, you know, to the farmer's market? And make it so that, the green space is one thing, but how do they link, link to each other? I guess is what I'm saying. We don't have a physical plan that shows that.
And Larry, a couple of things to, I, I agree with Krista, kind of starting in that area and, and building out from there. And one of the things that I've been working with, with staff on, and the mayor's been involved in as well, is working with TJ on his property, figuring out what he wants to do with that as well. I mean, that's a big area of contention across our entire community. And it's funny that you, you have the Plaza Drive on here, because that's been one of the things that's kind of been tossed around, is, is there a possibility for the city to create, you know, finish Plaza Drive all the way out to Apache Trail right there? And what that would do for his property? And also, that comes into what his vision of that property is, you know, moving forward, as he's trying to redevelop it over the years, which potentially fixes parking lot problems and other things that we've had there. But the other piece to this, too, is that we have to think about parking in our downtown. And I think that it scares me to have the east of Idaho be a lot of single-family homes when we're trying to create this downtown of mixed-use office space, restaurants, retail, commercial, a couple parts mixed in here and there and, and things like that. And then we really don't have a place for parking. So I agree that we need to better identify our downtown area, but what in terms of bonding or funding through a city's mechanisms can we do to initiate growth and opportunity there so we can take control over that?
Well, the city has, well, yeah, you have to have a revenue source to pay bonds back. And so you have to pledge sales tax or a property tax. And I don't know of a revenue bond, I don't know what the revenue stream here would be for revenue bond, so.
Revenue bond's a little more problematic.
Yeah, because you'd have to charge for parking, and no one likes to charge for parking, especially in a downtown that's not this dense. We don't have a parking utility. That's how a lot of cities have a parking utility that will issue revenue bonds, then they have income coming from leases or whatever to pay the bonds back.
Of all of the developers that have come with their own ideas, has any of them brought forth the work-live type place so that we still can maintain some retail through there or office spaces?
No, no, I think what the latest really is, is we have about a half a million square feet of retail down here. And that, even if you have a hundred acres of development here, that the half a million square feet of retail that you already have here, you don't need a lot more retail. And now the world has changed. We do have some office dedicated uses like Horizon, or, you know, we have some smaller office spaces like, you know, the Tax and Accounting, or we have the, this kind of professional office building here. But there's not a great demand for that.
So with the change-
But housing will eventually, you just got to make sure that you hold out some of these parcels, that there could be mixed use later on. So the residential might come first. We've been working with a developer for a long time on Junction, that, well, maybe we should hold this corner out for an office building, or retail, or mixed use. Right now, they're not talking about that. So the demand has to be there.
So, because commercial has changed so much in the last few years, as far as not building the big boxes like we did, because a lot more sales are all internet-forced, do we need as much commercial in this downtown as we originally thought?
I, well, I still think if you're going to try to create a destination, so you're already trying to do that with Flatiron Park, the community festivals, you want someone to leave the festival and go to the handlebar. You want, I mean, so I think there will always be a need for that. But I think it will be, what's hard to do is takes this, it is somewhat of a clean slate, but we don't control any of the land. We kind of control the zoning, and that's it. And so we are reactionary. We're going to react to these developments when they come in. And so how do we get ahead of that and tell the developer, no, we really, we like what you're doing, we like the density? Eighteen units an acre, nineteen units an acre is great, but we really don't want a wall around it. And we really don't really know if we want a gate, you know, because then it doesn't. Connect to, those principles, I think, is what we have to get out to the developer.
And density and height is another concern. I mean, I agree, I think the four-story apartment complex debacle last year was just not the right area. But I think height is always a concern in the community, because we have the mountain. And I think that we need to get out in front of that conversation in terms of what could happen in our downtown, because there is zoning for quite high buildings.
Yeah, the zoning right now allows sixty feet. The forty-three feet is the height of Horizon. The city, this tower that we have here is forty.
It's how many, Horizon's how many?
Forty-three.
I was thinking it was thirty.
To the top, yeah. We've looked at the building elevations today, that is forty-three, forty-three feet. So I, again, if you're going to have a downtown, you're going to have density. So it's like, you gotta, you can't have it both ways. So if you want a number of units down here, you're going to see, be seeing two- and three-story buildings down here. I don't know that the market will support today, four-story buildings.
Larry, when you say mixed use- When you say mixed use, are you talking about businesses on the bottom, apartments on the top? What do you mean by mixed use?
So generally, that is. So, or on one site, you have different types of product on the same site. So right now, we have this concept that, you know, in this area would be very high density. You know, you'd have ten to twelve apartment buildings. Up in this area, they would be more the rowhouse type, but it's still considered multifamily, but it's owner-occupied. But there, it's a building with five units in it, and it's maybe two stories. So that would be technically mixed use, because there's two different products on one. But mixed use, you should think about the whole downtown as well. And here, you would say mixed use, because maybe there's some retail parcels along Old West Highway, and then they're developing this as well. Or somehow, they're complementing this here, or maybe they're fronting a building along here. But by and large, it's residential, and mixed use is kind of within the site that maybe they have room for, you know, maybe another office building here or something.
So, basically, at the end of this long presentation, the whole idea is to throw a grid down here to tie this all together. So it's in walking, in this kind of pedestrian-friendly downtown area. So I would, I would say we would need to look at these parcels and find a nucleus, and then work from there. Find, find, where, where do we want this area to be? Like Krista, okay, retail on the bottom, apartments on the, on the top. We, we find an area for that, and like, I, I understand, we don't control the land. We don't, we can't tell these people what to build. But what we can do is control the zoning. We could say, hey, this is, this is our area, and in this particular position, we would like to see something like this. And then we could spiderweb from that to kind of tie it all in together. But if we start saying, okay, down here in the left-hand corner, we like to see some mixed use. Up here, we like to see some high density. If we just, if you're, if the whole idea behind this presentation is to say, this is what we have and available to us in the city, and our idea here for the future is to try to tie it all together. Well, we should start somewhere, right? We should start, we should have like a nucleus of this whole place, saying, okay, this is where we like to start. And then from that point on, we can spread out and, and find ways to tie it together. You see what I'm saying?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not disagreeing with you. What I'm saying is, what the down, what the general plan says is, we need a plan for downtown. We have ten or twelve documents. We kind of have these physical-looking graphics that some look nice and some are outdated. And we have development proposals that are, that are coming fast and furious. And so that's, to me, something that does stitch it together, that takes the policy piece of it. What do we think conceptually when we visualize downtown? What are we even looking at? To me, the heart of it really is Flatiron Park. If you just look at a bullseye, okay, how do we radiate from there? How do we get people? That's where we've spent a million dollars, and we're going to spend more, and we're putting more money into a off-leash dog park.
Available right there is to the east of Flatiron Park.
Well, and to the north of Ness's, yeah.
But the last thing we want, what, I think, and I think this is what he's alluding to, the last thing we want is just to start plunking something here and plunking something there, and end up with, we need to have for that whole entire area, something that flows together well, and a good plan.
I would like to tell a developer that says, love your density, but it really doesn't relate to anything around it, and trying to build a real downtown.
Well, something that we can stick to, because with, as different elections come up, you have different people coming. And council on this area, once they figure out what that vision's going to be, needs, it's going to have to be tough. And there's probably going to have to be some no's in those conversations, so that it's not just plunking it here and plunking something there. But we, we need to come up with a good, strong vision.
It's, it's easy to tell people what we don't want, and that's been very easy. We don't want single-family detached homes, like Dan Kaufman's building, or, or D.R. Horton. We don't want that in our downtown. Then you come back and say, well, what do you want? And we say, well, here's the density we want. But then it's hard to say, well, again, how, how do these developments kind of work? So to me, it's, if one developer came in and did this, and did all these projects on this hundred acres, that would be easy, right? But we're going to have five different developers with different ideas, and what works for them has to work for us as well.
What do other communities have for examples that we could, any, is, where, I mean, is there, I don't even know how you find stuff like that.
Yeah, Gilbert, they say, is an overnight success after, what, twenty-five years? They, they, they have been thinking about it, and the city was out, and they had the wherewithal to go out and buy lands and, and hold out, and kind of create, you know, design standards and what the character's going to be. And they had a tiny nucleus of a downtown from the seventies and eighties. And we, no offense to anybody, we had a shopping center. We had a little strip mall with the Bash's in it, and that's the nucleus of our downtown.
And along a three-hundred-foot football field, right?
And, and we had a, a six-lane US highway running through the middle of it.
And that kind of goes back to my point, though, about being able to buy land or buy that opportunity through bonding. I mean, is, is that actually an option? I understand-
It is an option, but I do think you kind of have to lay all this out over again. I, I don't want to, let's not do a plan for the sake of doing a plan.
Right.
And, but I think so much has been done, so much has been thought about it, that there's a lot to build from. So it shouldn't be doing from scratch. The drizz was good. A lot of the efforts that we already have in place, the downtown master plan, and again, all the things that the city has done. To me, it's like, well, not to be pie in the sky, but if we did have TIF, what would this place look like today? It'd look a whole lot different in twenty-twenty-one than it, than it does, because we could have made it happen. And so now that we don't have that revenue source, what is the best tool we can do to make it happen the way, so we don't make that mistake and have five or six developments that could be anywhere in the city? I think what you want, you want something that, you want to build some, some character here.
Larry? Larry?
It's a tie, I don't know who was first, I don't know.
The way Ironwood Station has their whole plan laid out with the houses facing the sidewalks, a much more friendly look to it, rather than building the walls around each separate little community. Has any of the people that are interested in any of this brought anything like that forward? Or it's not to that point yet?
No, they, well, they have a wall around most of it. And then they've kind of, where this park, this BLM land, that's what I'm saying. To me, this is location, location, location. This is where you'd want to front some units and have a seventeen-acre park in your backyard. Same thing along here. This land here would also front that, to me, has the highest value. This land has very high value because of its proximity to Flatiron and here. This one, I think, just has more circulation. Again, maybe some views to the mountain that hopefully may not get blocked, I don't know. But to me, that's where the value is. The other value is the four thousand acres of open space that we have between Lost Dutchman and McKellips in a twelve-mile ribbon. So what you're selling here is active recreation. If you want something to, people to live here, okay, you're two seconds off the freeway. That's why land along the freeway gets developed. So if you're going to market to somebody, you're going to market to someone who in five minutes can, you know, ride their mountain bike to the state park, or they can go to, you know, twenty minutes, they can be, you know, in the Superstition. Or they could put their car on the bike, or they can, you know, go rent a horse, or, or, you know, stable a horse, and they can use all this. That's the market. So to me, there's the, the synergy you're trying to create here. I think the three options with the green space are really the heart of it. And then what you have around that, that make, would make someone want to live here, of any age. Again, we tell everybody, no over fifty-five. We really don't want these lock-and-leave places that you see. We want some year-round people downtown.
So Larry or Bryant, really, I mean, at this point, you know, the B3 zoning, I mean, you're talking about having potential single-family home and, and some various mixed use. I mean, those, it looks like if I'm reading the chart correctly, they require a CUP. So I think that's kind of back to Krista's point, is we're going to have to have some of those tough, knuckle-headed conversations of saying no. But I think what also scares me is the fact that we have some zoning in here, like, I'm scared to even say it out loud, because I don't want it to actually happen, but like a certain senior care facility that could come in and build and be perfectly fine under the current zoning. So.
We do have some homework to do in updating that code, for sure.
Sure. So those plans that, that we're talking about, I mean, I agree, I think we all do. But that's not going to happen overnight. So how do we prevent that development from coming in? I mean, the-
Well, we would say, well, we're not going to do a CUP for XYZ. We, staff would say, well, you can propose it, we'll recommend against it, plan commission, may or may not. Same thing for rezoning. These folks came in here, this, these folks came in, and they have a very nice product, but it's the single-family rental. So we're doing a hundred and ninety-five single-family rental at Meridian and Southern, right? We're doing another fifty-four units at Superstition and Main. And we have another proposal for the area on, between Broadway, Tomahawk and Old West Highway, that big triangle that the Week's Wash comes through. They want to do single-family rental. The folks that are looking at this, they want to do a single-family rental south of Lennar. So this product, cities are getting hit up with six or eight of these products. You know, we got five or six of these that people, this is what everybody's building, so developers want to do it. So we said, no, that only gets you to ten units an acre, we need at least thirteen. So they're going to go back and see how they can get density, but the product's the same. Or the, the audience, their, who they're marketing it to is the same. But right now, we're just saying, don't bring anything forth unless it's at least thirteen units an acre. And again, that's going to be different. Some people aren't going to like that. We all need to know that.
And I see, I mean, you have the proposed B3 uses to eliminate and what to potentially add. I, I mean, I, I think, I don't know if this is necessarily the full and complete list, or if council had any input on what they'd like to see-
Uh, this was an early list, yeah.
But I, I mean, at this point, would that help to get the ball rolling while we are trying to create this plan? I mean, can we look to maybe have that brought forward?
Well, yes and yes, but, you know, we're doing a subdivision ordinance right now. We're doing medical marijuana, we're doing cargo containers. With all due respect, this, to me, is higher than cargo containers. But we already went to the plan commission on cargo containers. So I, right now, we got to do medical marijuana, or recreational marijuana, and we have to amend the subdivision code for these other developments. So we're probably at fifty percent of updating the twenty-fourteen code, which is an update, I think, from the twenty-oh-nine code. But we're getting slammed. We're getting slammed with all these developments. And we've actually asked for some money for some consultant help to help finish the zoning code. Some of these updates.
I mean, that's a good thing.
It is.
It's much better for us to work through these, and we'll keep working, and Larry's working through that, than where we were in oh-eight, oh-nine, when, you know, we're going through a great recession. So let's, we're grateful for that. Larry, can we explain a little bit to the public and to the council why you think, in your professional opinion, we're getting so many of these single-family rental?
Well, I think part of it could be COVID. It was a, a product probably two or three years ago. Avondale was getting them, but not very good quality. You know, they will be the poorer, poorer quality units that you see fifteen or twenty years from now. But that's what banks find- You know, they will be the poorer, poorer quality units that you see fifteen or twenty years from now, but that's what banks finance. Every city now, and Sydney has done a great job here to say, you know, I know what they're approving because he talks to all these planners in Queen Creek and Gilbert and say, we're not going to accept, you know, the bottom shelf plan. We want, we already know the lessons learned in these other cities. So, um, we think we have a better product at, uh, Meridian and Southern. I think talking to Stephanie, who used to work here, works at Gilbert, they have six of these going on, these single-family rentals. So part of it is, what, how they describe it is, one developer, he's going to propose three-story buildings. But now there are folks of a variety of different ages. They don't want anybody, as they say, above them, below them, or beside them. So now they're building that product, that built, that a hundred and ninety-five units, I think there's over a hundred and ten buildings. So depending if they're one, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, you'll get a cluster of buildings or individual buildings that are six, seven hundred square feet.
And knowing that this isn't for everyone, but understanding to affordability. And that's a goal in the general plan as well, right?
Yeah, yeah. So it's not a bad product. It's like, but do we need six of them? And we certainly, do we need it in the downtown?
The downtown, right.
So we're trying to steer it elsewhere. Um, and we have been. So again, along Old West Highway on something where the floodplain bisects it and it's, you know, got a good access on Tomahawk, Broadway and Old West Highway. It, it may be a good fit. But here, we're just saying, if you're going to do it, you got to figure out a way to do it at thirteen units an acre.
Larry, is planning and zoning getting this presentation?
Um, they can. They haven't. I, I mean, we gave this to the old council back in November. It wasn't that long ago. But so much has happened really in the last four months with these development proposals. So.
It might help if they do though.
Yeah. So to me, again, um.
And we got to start somewhere. And again, I would go back to focusing on, let's start with the highest priority area where we, where we know we absolutely don't want this, 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 and this in this area. I would say start with the strictest, the area that's going to be the most restrictive and branch out from there. And again, it starts right in the center of that and branch out. I'm not saying it, but, but I'm just saying, we got to start somewhere.
Well, you're going to see a proposal in the next two months on the twenty-two acres on the east side of Idaho, I can tell you right now. And so it'd be nice to start there, but it's not starting there. It's starting on the east side of Idaho, north of Junction. A developer has about four hundred units planned and we've kind of, to what we're doing with them now, getting the best product we think we can. Um, they have certain reasons why they're having the higher density to the south and the little bit lower to the, to the north. I've been trying to discourage gated communities. I, I don't know that that builds community in my mind. I don't think people, they feel safer. But I think the chief will probably tell you, is there any less crime in a gated community than there is? But develop, people go in there and, and so some of those things, we're trying to work through with that developer. Um, and, and I think they're convinced they like that site because of the seventeen-acre park.
Can you show where the, on the map where you're talking specifically?
That is, um.
Just north of the New Fries?
Uh, yes. It's this, um, these parcels right here. And that again is the county BLM slash land.
Larry, to clarify, we, we believe the project fits in with many of the goals that we want to accomplish here in downtown.
This is round, this is round seven for Janine. And to some of you have been involved in this one. So this is finally getting a developer that's getting more in line with your long-term, what I would call twenty-year plan of creating a first step. So it, it's kind of nice to have one that's now coming to the forefront, that is a legitimate project. I think it's in the tune of a hundred, a hundred million dollar project. It's a big project.
So we can say yes to that. It won't, but this wash is gone and there's no connectivity that we originally thought. Previous developers actually used this wash and backed up houses to it or backed up units. And this developer is going to build a wall around it and that's my only, as far as the density and the developer, that's all great. But how does this twenty-two acres then, is there anything else we can do to make sure that it fits into a larger vision of downtown?
What do you mean the wash is gone?
Yeah, well, this used to be a four oh four wash and I think it's no longer going to be a four oh four. And they basically reroute these washes so they can do development. And so the concept of, like here, using washes to, you know, connect to neighborhoods and things like that, that goes away. If that's something strong people feel about, then we have to tell folks, but we don't really have any teeth anywhere to say, no, you can't do it. But we can have a planning principle that says, geez, it would be nice to have, you know, people that live along here to connect here. Kind of like what we did with Dan Kaufman on the far south at forty acres. We convinced Dan to make sure his subdivision could actually get to the wash because we want a regional trail system. And he left a vacant lot there. So if you live in his neighborhood, you could get to a regional trail system.
Isn't that what's created some problems though, is diverting these washes? I thought we couldn't do that.
They're not diverting them. Where it enters the property and where it leaves the property is the same. But using them as green space, open space, that's what I'm saying is we're going to lose here.
Okay.
Can't you highly suggest it to the developer?
Yeah, we can. We can. It's not, you know, the ink's not dry. So yes, we can do that, but we.
It's part of a bigger effort. We're working, as Bryant alluded to earlier, on this. It's not only going to be a park here, but it's going to be a dual, um, dual approach, kind of like what we're doing up at the dog park. We're going to fix some drainage issues because this all links into many of the flooding issues down here, right? So, so it's not just the developer getting in our way, but there's a bigger effort going on to, to how to solve some of the bigger downtown drainage issues.
My takeaway or point is we don't have a downtown master plan. We, you may think we do or we have done lots of planning efforts. We don't have a downtown master plan that we can, um, tell a developer, this is what we want. This is what we don't want. This is what we want the architecture to look like. This is how we want this side of Idaho to relate to the west side of Idaho. That we don't have.
Can you go back to the picture?
So in the meantime, we're going to get proposals. We're going to do the best effort we can through the plan commission, the council, to try to get that. But in the, in the lack of these policy guidance, we don't have it. Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am. What?
Can you go back to the picture with the yellow, the orange? It's color-coded. Go back to those.
I have, I have it in here a couple of times.
Sorry about that.
Not that one, but that one.
This one. So to me, these yell, what we were talking about at the focal point and this yellow part you're talking about, they kind of go hand in hand. So you're telling us that we've got some development coming pretty quick right there on the east side of Idaho.
This one, the east side of Idaho for sure. This one has actually gone through escrow. Um, they have, I think, extended it by another year. So they were, I think this one, to me, this will prove the market. What's happened is there is no market here. So developer goes out and tries to get financing and said, I want to build multifamily here, two hundred and eighty units. And then they, there's no comps. There's no comparables that they can go to a bank or, uh, um, a funder, financier, whatever equity partner that says, oh yeah, we would like your project because we know that the absorption rate is A, B, you know, this and that. So this developer is not as squeamish. Local guy says, yep, I'm going to build about four hundred units here. And if they get absorbed quickly, then these others will happen. I think there, this will be the lead steer, if you will.
Which I think, and that's a part of the challenges, that under the current zoning, I mean, there's nothing that could stop an assisted living facility that's six stories from going in at the Grand Hotel site. And then that's gone. So I kind of, I, I like your point about starting somewhere and I think it's that triangle piece where the Grand Hotel site is because we know other things are coming down the line on the other side.
So maybe offer, I can offer some thoughts as we kind of look at this. One of the ideas at staff is that we could come back and, and, and invest in a next-level downtown plan. We haven't done, we could put that in the budget this year and, and keep that going. While in the meantime, knowing that this first yellow piece is, is forthcoming, um, is more imminent. The others are still more in that planning phase.
And we can go through the B-three district. I think, I've been talking about it for six years, so I may as well get it done. Is to go through and fix the, I think the 2014 code is a great improvement over what I saw from 2009. But these things aren't written in concrete. So I think we could go back and say, okay, let's go and just bring the B-three district and we can eliminate the uses for sure we don't want. And that, I think we can do, um, anytime. I think we already have direction staff somewhere.
We do.
And B-three is only in this area. It's only in the downtown area.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think that's.
Yeah, I think we can bring back a single amendment that kind of deals with those for sure unwanted uses, takes care of those.
I, I think that's pivotal for a, a stopgap for right now.
Yes.
Well, not only that, but if you say this developer's coming in to bring something here that's in this vision we're creating, what, what does it take up here on the other side where the county park is? What does it take for us to let the county build us, let us put a park there?
Well, it's already in the works. It is BLM land, but it has a, I don't know, ninety-nine-year patent or something with the county.
The patent, it's just the same type of patent we, or the same type of thing we have on the rodeo grounds.
Yeah.
It's under the county working with BLM.
And so there has been, Mike Weaver and Emile have been working with Pennell County Flood Control District to, I think, the better, um, diagram. Well, you can see these washes, but this is Goldfield Wash that kind of comes through here. Is to make some larger retention basin here that solves some problems. This area kind of comes into different areas, but it all ends up kind of behind Gus Coons' Plaza and down here and then eventually this way. So this would stop some upstream flow and kind of kill two birds with one stone. It, it becomes open space. It becomes a retention basin and, uh, we're working with the Flood Control District and the county on that already. But it's really, that's what it is. It's a, it's a flood control-type project. The next step of that is really turning it into a park to the amenity. So open space is one thing, but you know, a usable park that people would want to have their front door on is another step in the discussion.
Well, that's why I bring that up because if we started that, then that would be the other next step of convincing a developer to build a, just like Central Park in New York City, build all the way around it or something like that. And, you know, with high density, um, all around that park area.
Yeah, again, I think the city wants to continue to make investments in Flatiron. I think there's a program that's been through everything. The dog park is another eight hundred thousand that's going to happen there. That's another amenity if you want to own a dog and live in the downtown. And then this may take two, three, four years to get done, but I think a developer, if they know this, that's going to happen, they'll start investing and if they can see ahead, they'll start saying, yep, I think it would be good to have units facing that park and having that nearby amenity. So Larry, those are the three anchor points to me. Are those three parks and some sort of trail system?
So north of the Old West Marketplace, that's, that, those are those parcels. You're saying that something's coming there. It's, it's in the works.
Probable.
Probable.
If we keep sending the.
And it's, and you said how many? You said what?
Um, it was, it's around four hundred units.
Is it, is it crazy to suggest a pedestrian bridge over Idaho? That actually will connect them to Flatiron Park?
Or what's called a hawk or a, uh, you know, you see a lot of those where you press the button and it actually stops the traffic. But working with ADOT, um, there are grant funds for those, for the, either the rectangular flashing beacon where that's the, the strobe. Or you actually put a stoplight mid-block there somewhere. But you want to put it where it relates to the other part of the triangle. You don't want to have it too far, too south, um.
Yeah. So we're, you know, we've had Los Vaqueros, we had Cowboys up. Now we're having another restaurant come in. That's a great thing to see that redevelopment. One of my biggest questions, Councilor Schroeder, is Idaho Road. And of course, today we sit in February. It's not August. And if you really watch pedestrian behavior, it's very rare you see someone park like in Beals and walk across the street and go up to Handlebar. Same, I, same, I don't see a lot of interaction east-west on Idaho. I always see, that's why I see a lot of this interaction that we're having with this developer kind of be more north-south, um, east of Idaho. But you know, the idea of trying to get folks across is something that we're trying to figure out to help.
Yeah, I think if you start adding a thousand units on the east side of Idaho, then they're going to want to get to Flatiron Park.
That's been talked about a lot, build a bridge.
I think a bridge would be cool.
Is there any way to get the state maybe to?
Never know.
It's a state road. I mean, I don't, it doesn't.
We would have to work with them.
You have to work through MAGA and apply for, um, some transportation enhancement type dollars to do that.
I'll remind you of the north-south corridor.
But even anything you can do with the state highway to, even just to landscape the, the, the corridor itself, just to kind of make it more appealing than just five lanes and then the sidewalk is right there. So a lot of developers though, like we saw at Ironwood Station, they want to detach the sidewalk and they want to create some green space. So there's a buffer. So nobody wants to walk along a road at forty-five miles an hour immediately next to the traffic lane. That's why these new developments always have, you know, a five-foot buffer than the sidewalk. So it's retrofitting. So. Okay.
Really enlightening, Larry. Thank you.
Good discussion.
All right. Thank you all.
Thanks, Larry.
Did we really get anywhere, Larry?
I think so. I think this was a great discussion, honestly, to be honest. It was practice. The first time I didn't do very good and, uh, the second time maybe it was a little better. I don't know.
Remember the Skype, the Sky Bridge at the park?
Yeah. Larry, I have a question for you with your pictures here. It's a curiosity question. Where did our pictures go? Um, there's, there's something on one of your pictures here that I can't figure out what it is.
Oh, we already closed the meeting? Sorry?
It was the one that said nineteen seventy-two. Find that, find that slide if you can. She had a question.
Go clear back to your first pictures, photographs.
Yeah. Now if you zoom that.
Now, what, what is?
I don't know if I can zoom into that.
Right up here on the south side of Old West Highway, right underneath where, starting where the Grand Hotel is. See that, that trail thingy underneath the Old West Highway?
This here?
Yeah.
What the hell is that?
That would be nineteen seventy-two.
Yeah, but it's on every one of these pictures. If you look at it close enough, I've never noticed it before till now and it's like, what is it?
Seventy-two?
We tried zooming.
Yeah, I had a dirt bike back then, but I didn't get it till like nineteen seventy-four. That's kind of probably an old.
Yeah, but it's even, look through the pictures. You'll see it on every one of them.
When you zoom in, it's weird looking.
Yeah, that could have been just a bypass for when they built the road. Who knows, you know?
But even it, it's still there clear up into, uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, up into the eighties and nineties, it's still there and I don't even know what it is.
I have a request to make a five-minute break.
Yeah.
Are we done? Weren't we done?
No.
You're going anyway.
All right, the last one. And I, I hope to make this one as short as possible.
Last one, Rob, we promise.
Is the discussion in the code of the West or how to avoid surprises? And be a good neighbor when you're buying, building and/or developing. And this is a town of Wickenburg's, uh, copy of the, the code of the West. Bryant, you want to introduce?
Yeah, I would just introduce it as, um, over the, I would say many years, council members and especially, uh, Mayor Wilson has talked about different things that come up in our area and certain areas of our community where it's unique. And, and in particular, the equestrian community where, um, folks will come up and they didn't realize they lived in a very horse-friendly community. And hey, there's a horse here. There's, it smells here. And so, um, or there's situations I like to say, um, in the public works world where we are not, um, in terms of, we're right on the alluvial plain of the Superstition Mountains. We get a, we get monsoon storms. They bring in, uh, dirt and they bring in, uh, soil and, and it takes us a little longer. We have a smaller staff. And we, as a city staff, have what I call a code of the West attitude and we're going to get there, but it's just taking a little longer. It's not going to be like Mesa. Or, I mean, proportionally, they have a lot more streets. So this outlines a, kind of a policy idea that this is kind of, and especially in certain areas of town, how it's, how our services are. And it gets people prepared, uh, to some degree, what, what to expect. So it's managing those expectations of what to expect with their neighbor, with code compliance and our, and of course, um, um, local government and our staff. So, um, we went and talked to Wickenburg about this. They adopted a proclamation that implemented this. This is just an example, right, Mayor? This doesn't, yeah, we would want to look it over, but I think you're introducing this idea. And, um, they adopted it. It's not in their city code or anything like that. And they use it with their chamber commerce. They use it with their, their, uh, development staff as well as, um, community that comes in and we could figure out methods of how to implement. But I think the first step is just to introduce the idea of how to help people work together as neighbors.
But one of the things I wanted to, you know, emphasize the fact that, you know, and I've seen this in other, well, in another state, uh, Colorado, I've seen it several times on it. And, and what it does is it basically, so many times you've got people that move into a community because they love the area, they love the smallness of it and everything. And, well, not only do they want to change it, but they also want the same services and the same responses that they get in the larger communities. And where I first got introduced to this, uh, was in, in Colorado, in a small community in Colorado. And what they did was when you wanted to go buy. And what they did was when you wanted to go buy the property, buy the house, whatever, this is one of the documents that you got that came out. And just like it says, life in, oh, here, Apache Junction is different than what it is in a big city. And this is what you're trying to basically, in a sense, get across. This is designed to educate the people that are considering buying. It's not a, I want to say a code or anything. This is strictly done for education. And if you look through this, you know, like for example, one of the things that I've had people come in and say, this pothole in front of my house has been there now for three weeks and you haven't filled it up yet. Well, I turn around to them. I said, well, first off, we have a limited staff and we have so many people that could go out. And second off, have you called it in? And they said, well, they should be out there every day looking at all the roads. Well, we got over 1,000 miles inside the city. And people will say, that many road, miles of roads inside the city? No, you don't. And I said, well, drive them. And tell me how many miles you covered on it. And, you know, those are things people just don't fully understand and comprehend. And of course, this will kind of help do that. I, shortly after we moved here, my youngest, excuse me, my oldest son was in high school. And back in Ohio where we were, school bus stopped right out in front of the house and picked up all the kids in the neighborhood that were there. And they moved down a half a mile down the road and stopped in front of that house. Here, they don't stop in front of every home. They go to the areas where the kids can gather. And so that's something that needs to be explained to people when they come in, that they understand what's going on. And one of the things that I get hilarious on, when we have rains and we have some real strong rains, where a lot of runoff. What the heck, the road? I can't get to work today because I can't get out of my area because all the roads are flooded. Why don't we build overpasses over everything?
Or sewers.
And, yes, or sewers. And this is to explain and to educate. And if you go through this document, they're talking about water rights. They're talking about sewer. You know, in the rural part of the community, we don't have sewer lines out there. So you may not have a sewer. You may have to have a septic tank. You have to understand what that is. And not all, natural gas is not available everywhere in the entire community. So, you know, we have to, you have to be paying attention and this is designed entirely to, and of course, we can design this and build this as to what is unique about us in this. And again, it's not, and of course, if you notice on the last page, they have phone numbers of all the different, you know, say departments that you may need to be contacted, whether it's county, whether it's city. And that way, it's a central place where they can go and look up and see what we need to do. And as far as, you know, the planning and zoning, we're telling them that, you know, hey, you have to worry about setbacks, but you need to contact planning and zoning and look what the setback requirements are in your neighborhood that you're buying.
Or don't build in a wash and things like that.
Or.
Don't build it.
Don't fill in a wash.
If you're close to a wash, you may have water going through your house when we have one heck of a rainstorm, which has happened so many times. And of course, our wonderful police had to rescue an individual that was being washed away, all because, you know.
Don't drive in washes.
He was, he went out.
When they're flooded.
In the flooded area and it attempted to wash him away.
Chip, this document, it was provided by the Town of Wickenburg Trails Advisory Commission. Who would you suggest that would write something like this up specific to our neighbor, to our area? As well as, the one thing that I noticed, it did not reference is even that Arizona Association of Realtors has a similar type, but more extensive list than this. But so who would you have put this together? The chamber?
I would think.
I wouldn't want the city to have to, staff to work on it.
I almost think it's kind of a collaboration of different things. I mean, I could see a piece from the Parks Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission. I mean, the different puzzle pieces, because you are right. I mean, the chamber plays a role in this as well and they're not listed on here. And I think that this is a great resource for education. I think this puts us miles ahead from the start of that whole process. Because then the other thing that I noticed that isn't necessarily on here is like what each of those departments do. We get questions all the time on Facebook, you know, of who to contact to start a business. Or, you know, well, that's the city clerk's, you know, department, you know, who, who are your points of contact? So I think there's a lot of different mechanisms that you can do. But I don't think it's necessarily the city staff or one department. I think it's commissions, the staff, the chamber.
It's still not down to one person.
And I would think more anything else is this could be a bringing together of a lot of different, I'll say, people from the community as well as city staff, putting their, the inputs into it to help put this all together. And of course, this is, was an example that was given to me from Wickenburg. I used to have one that somehow I magically misplaced, was from another community here in Arizona that had done one, which was further up north in their wonderful temperatures and go extremes. And that's one of the things that they were talking about. You may have snow and it's not going to be removed tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I've had some from the different communities in Arizona, excuse me, in Colorado as well. But they were all put together in design to help the new resident understands what's going on. And this is, to me, is something that we can all work together on and put together and, you know, help our community fully.
Chip, information always helps.
What if you, what if we recommended to staff that they send a copy of this to every department in the city? To the chamber, to the sewer district, to the water district, to the, to the school district, to the fire district? And ask every, all of those different people to redline it, their input.
Well, but I still think Gail's point is that the end of all of that, who puts it all together? And, and I don't know, I mean, if that's obviously not creating a commission to do that. But is that a group of people? Do we want council doing that? Do we want a mix of council and staff? Do we, you know, what do we want in that and how do we do that?
This belongs in the focal point committee because it's like a welcome wagon. I would throw it on the focal point.
Well, so I guess here's my other challenge with that and the same point to bringing it back to the chamber is we could, of course, ask the focal point commission, but we don't control them like we do necessarily one of our own commissions. I don't disagree. I think that's a great place for it, but how do we ensure that the work gets done at the end of the day?
Yeah. One of the things I would say definitely is for us as councils to oversee it and keep it going. And Bryant, I can, I'm pretty sure that city staff would be willing to assist us in getting this together.
So one of my favorite things about government is if you ever want to really crank things up and get it done fast, create a blue ribbon committee. And what I mean by that is it, just have to add some caution that whenever I see something go out to a committee or, you know, we need to just remember that. We're still working on dark skies. It's a committee and it's being worked on. We're working on the downtown sign with the service committees and they're making some progress. I do think that there's a role in city staff to help assemble it together. I don't know, you know, combination of focal point, chamber, departments, of course, there's the groups that you talked about. But I haven't really, to me, I didn't even know we're all ready to solve it tonight, you know? To me, it was just a matter, just trying to be able to get this idea, concept, that it sounds like it's highly favorable, that we want to have some type of a welcome, you know, kind of document to help.
If I understand correctly, we're going to have an Apache Junction manual for people to move into town?
Have you not heard of a welcome wagon basket, like a welcome, you ever hear that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Of course syllabus would be great too while we're at it.
On the other, you know, but this is kind of a, hey, we have a different lifestyle out here. As far as like your roads aren't going to be plowed as fast as you'd like or the water is not going to. So is it, okay, here's the AJ manual. So when you move here, don't move here with such high expectations and you'll never be disappointed? Is that what it?
No, I don't think that that's it at all. I just think it, we do have a lot of people who move into the community who aren't connected. I mean, how many people move into the community that don't even know where the library is? I mean, that's a great point of reference of, hey, here's some of your buildings. Who are your council members? Who do you reach out to? Who are your city staff members? I think that whatever we can do to be as open and welcoming as possible, this gives them kind of a guideline. The same as if you move into an HOA and you get your CCNRs. I mean, that tells you, you know, when you can put your trash can out, what color your trash can can be on what day and, you know, all of those things. I think it's a great introduction to the community.
I think, but I, I think that while both of you made good points, I think the bottom line is, is it needs to be pretty concise.
Right.
You know, you can't, you can't give all the information. And ideally, what you want to do is you want to give them that information before they're signing their paperwork for their home. You know what I mean? By then, it's kind of too late. But, but not that we can necessarily control where that happens. But I think it has to be fairly short and concise or people aren't going to even look at it.
I think the fact that we're just a unique community with a unique identity, the Code of the West kind of speaks for itself. It, I think that's what it says. It says, hey, we're not like Tempe, Mesa, you know? And I would agree, it's great that with the ideas of wanting to branch out and give everybody all the information. It's kind of what the Chamber of Commerce is already for. But being this, with this Code of the West in particular, I agree with Kelly is keep it concise. And it's really more about identifying that we're a unique community more than it is saying, hey, here's where everything is in one document.
No.
Chip, did Wickenburg tell you who, when they give this out to people?
It said in the escrow, when they're buying.
Right. They were given out when, you know, people were closing on their homes.
Yeah, has to be.
Yeah.
And that aspect on it.
That makes sense.
And it was available through the realtor. So when they were looking at homes that they could, you know, it was possible, depended on the realtor if he gave it to them ahead of time or not.
So now you've got to get the buy-in of all, every realtor in town and every developer and whoever.
Well, yeah. And I think we can work through some of these details and I think we can have a little committee to work through it. And I really like the idea of keeping it concise and having it at escrow. But it isn't, it isn't going to be the same to the, to the folks that come in down south at the state land. They're going, it's different. We're, we just need to remember who we're marketing towards. So I think we could take it from here. We'll get going, Mayor, and we'll go from there and start working it.
All right. I appreciate it. And if you don't have anything else, I will close the meeting.